The planning board meeting in accordance with the provisions of match general law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty notice was previously given that the planning board meeting. Or the planning board will meet today, Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, seven P M. Tonight's meeting is held entirely by Zoom due to the impending storm that we are all experiencing. Because of that, all votes will be via roll call and you'll need to have your camera on to to vote. And there will be no in person meeting. It's all it's all done remote today. The previous links for Zoom were provided on the town's website. You can access there on the town website. Alternatively to Zoom, N C T V is live streaming this on their. The first item at seven o'clock, we have a public hearing. For ninety ninety two ninety six one hundred one hundred R Pond Street and twelve Sharon Ave. So I will let. Eric read that in.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with mass journal law, section forty A, the Norfolk zoning by law, section three, ten, six dash eleven. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, seven P M. Uh, strictly Zoom. Uh, regarding a site plan application for property located at ninety ninety two ninety six one hundred one hundred R Pond Street. And twelve Sharon Ave, Norfolk, Mass. The applicant Next Grid Inc., the Boston Matt, is proposing a modification to a previously approved site plan for stormwater management permit. For the proposed construction of a large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system. Including construction of site access road, utility poles, underground electric, equipment pads, and stormwater management facilities. Properties located in the C one and C one B zoning districts. Reference assessors map nineteen block sixty nine lots twenty seven twenty eight forty three fifty five fifty eight and sixty one. The application plans are available for public inspection at town Norfolk website. Or in the office of Norfolk planning board during the hours of nine to six, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Eric. We do have this. So Rich, you want to give us? The overview and you want to share something on the screen?
You can do both, although. Maybe it might be easier. I'll give you maybe Nathan may wanna.
Okay.
Do the share screen.
Yeah, whatever.
Walk through it. So this is a modification to the previously approved solar. Groundman solar ray project on Pond Street, which is a combination of some private parcels along with. The town Norfolk Water Department property where the water storage tank is located. The um, they'll be permitting will be valid to planning board in terms of tonight for site plan approval. And then they'll be before the zoning board appeals at the end of February for a special permit. There was a letter um, outline the changes um, to the project um, from the previous approval. Um, those changes at a highlight level were reflective of a completed negotiated lease agreement with the town Norfolk. Previously, there was the provision of an access road between Pond Street over to Sharon Ave. Where the police station is located as a means of emergency vehicle access between. The police station over to Pond Street. At the time when the R P was put out before the town. It was the thought that this access road will provide with shortened response times. Between Sharon Ave out to Pond Street. At that time, the police station wasn't fully operational yet. Um, since that time, the station has been operational for a few years now. And in light of. Response times comparing them what would would it would be access road versus no access road. The town Norfolk, the through negotiations with Next Grid decided to remove that access road. And in exchange for a removal of the access road, they're making a one time payment uh, to the town Norfolk. The amount of two hundred thousand dollars. As part of negotiate these terms. There's some other terms in terms of the electric usage that were negotiated. Um, but as it relates to the site plan, the access road is removed. Now it's a gravel road. And there were some changes to the stormwater management system in relation to the changes to the site plan. You did receive, I don't know if you had a chance to look up just earlier today before the meeting. It was reviewed by the fire department and the fire chief was satisfied with the proposed layout. Uh, being proposed by Next Grid. That was one of the comments that you'll hear about in the peer review from Beta Group. Think that generally covers it in terms of where we're at. I'll want to do a screen share Nathan to uh, Nathan Collins with Next Grid. To walk through the site plan.
I'd be happy to. Uh, good evening. Uh, for the record, Nathan Collins, Director of Engineering with Next Grid. Uh, I'm going to share my screen. Everyone see that?
Yes.
Everyone see that? Okay. Uh, so Richard summarized it up pretty well. But just to kind of go over the site plan originally, so the the actual solar array layout. There were no changes to so number of panels, location of panels, et cetera. There were there were no modifications. If you're were familiar with, I actually have it here. This was the original plan approved. As Richard noted, there was a paved road that connected Pond Street uh, to Sharon Ave. And uh, during final negotiations negotiations with the town uh, for the lease within the town owned parcel. It was negotiated that uh, that road was no longer necessary. So the revised site plan that was submitted uh, shows. This section of our access road to the solar array being modified from. Uh, the tubinous concrete pavement to just gravel. Uh, and as you can see, this section of the. The proposed uh, road that connected to Sharon Ave has been removed. What that resulted in was the loss of a large underground detention system here. Uh, as well as a series of uh, catch basins, drain manholes, twelve inch uh, drainage pipe that connected all those to that proposed system. We did have to add some stone trenches around um, areas of the array uh, that you could see here. And. See if I can find the lower one uh, and down in this vicinity just to. Offset the change in surface conditions from wooded to lawn area. Uh, so these proposed stone trenches are designed to mitigate that offsite peak. As Richard had noted, we we did receive a review letter from Beta Group. Um, we had a. Uh, productive meeting yesterday between uh, Next Grid, the uh, Richard and Beta Group. Uh, we went through their comments. We are currently working, I should say B S E group, our our engineer of record. Is currently working on uh, some minor modifications to the stormwater to address those concerns. Uh, and we hope to have that submitted uh, back to Beta Group for review, hopefully sometime early to middle of next week. That pretty much sums it up. Um, I'm happy to answer any any questions that the board may have as it relates to some of these changes.
So Nathan, I I didn't have any like specific questions, but um, I know Beta provided us with a their oversight. You know, their over their overview package. Um, and you said you talked with them. So uh, I guess we'll need to and you'll be finishing that up next week. So we'll need to get that response back from Beta just to make sure all all items are satisfied. Um, I don't think is that I mean, is that fair? Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, yes, that's accurate. Um, you know, we'll provide responses that um, we anticipate either. Beta Group agreeing with our responses uh, based on our conversations we had yesterday. Not not many of them were. Like, you know, egregious or uh, items that we we can't address. Uh, there were, there were two items. Uh, that were part of their comments that we had asked for uh, to be included as conditional approvals. Um, one of those was. Test pits of some of the new infiltration areas. Uh, we had just requested that that be a conditioned approval that we could conduct those test pits. Prior to um, you know, after the um, vegetation is cleared and we have better access uh, to those areas. I know that's been a condition on some previous projects uh, that were constructed in town. Um, I don't, I don't believe Richard was opposed to that. And then there was one item regarding the final uh, SWIP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Which will be prepared uh, prepared by our um, E P C contractor as part of their. Construction general permit that they submit uh, because this project requires clearing of more than one acre.
A couple of things they have in terms of the project. From previously, so I know there are some board members that are newer to this is there is uh. There's evergreens up along uh, Pond Street that were part of the original approval to provide some screening. Those are on this plan as it carries forward. There's two sections, you know, Nathan's shown it there. Um, and one is where the paved, uh, that pavement's being removed where the. Police Department often uh, is located, uh, checking on people speeding for reference. Phil is online. Um, if you want to hear from him in terms of. His comments, uh, what those outstanding items are. Uh, the one thing Nathan, though, I did talk to Phil today about them, just want to be. Pretty uh, confident of, there was. Uh, a few weeks ago with some of the storms that we had, there was a. Some runoff that was going from the site onto Pond Street and then making its way down the hill into the catch basin. It wasn't coming from the drive. It was actually coming from a wooden area. To uh, in between the two drive points at the, just below the the top of the the vertical curve. I just want to make sure we're in good shape and that that we don't end up having. You know, runoff out into Pond Street creating icing conditions, not necessarily worried about flooding per se because it's on the hill. But uh, those I just don't want to, just want do want to raise that point tonight, just as we look at the stormwater.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be good to hear from Phil if um, just to kind of get his overview on the comments. And um, and the conversation that him and Nathan had and and what the steps are moving forward.
Excellent. Yeah, just uh, for uh, record, my name is Phil Paradise of Beta Group. Uh, him, my staff and I reviewed this plan. As well as the previous versions of in the past. And uh, we generally don't have a whole lot of issues with the with the the project. The, we assume that all the waivers that are pertinent, other than the, other than the waivers for the road going through the site. We'll continue to put the, with the new filing here. Um, we uh, we were with the uh, cutting out of the access road. We were just a little concerned with access to the site and and through the site as uh, as uh, we've mentioned. Um, and it's primarily for emergency services. So if if the fire department is uh, is okay with it. Um, then we generally don't have uh, much concern over that. It's not like a public hazard or anything. So we did want to uh, verify the fills where the similars is before so make sure we don't have a. Uh, export of of Phil. There are the uh, we we definitely appreciated the simple, uh, simpler. Uh, stormwater design. Uh, I think the use of stone, stone trenches. In uh, in solar projects is is a is a good option. It offers uh. Um, generally a uniform or spreading out of the uh. The recharge as well as a a simple way to um, uh, build and maintain. These systems as opposed to a closed on the ground system. So. So the only, the only concern we have with that was that um, it's best if these trenches are fairly level. Um, so that they can fill up uniformly and hold as much water as possible. Uh, in the future. And uh, so we just, we just asked the applicant to look at those. Um, and as was discussed, there's uh, several areas that are not uh. Uh, not satisfied with test pit data. So um, but I think because. Because this is a pretty much an open project, the the um. Infiltration system could be relocated fairly easily. So we are okay with the uh. Putting off on the uh, test pits until construction. Uh, as well as the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, that is typically done by contractor anyway. So we would expect that to be um, uh, completed before uh, pre-construction meeting. As well as uh, an updated operation and maintenance plan and an illicit discharge state. So generally that we don't have uh, much and uh, as uh. As was stated before, we we did have a a good meeting with them. Uh, and I think we're understanding and and can iron out the. You know, the plan changes as necessary. And it's good to see you all.
Yes, thank you, Phil. And um, yeah, so that's good. Appreciate the the update and overview on that. Um, so it sounds like you'll be. Uh, you'll be working with Nathan here, you know, next week and getting kind of getting all your issues addressed, all your concerns addressed. Any, any comments from the board? I see, I see head shaking now. So that's a, that's a no. Uh, any, I'm I'm going to open it up. Any comments from the the public? Don't see any hands raised.
I'll speak for the public. Go ahead, if you don't. I don't see Dennis Brolin on here. I did um. So I did discuss this yesterday with uh, Next Grid, as you can see in on the site plan at the lower. On the west side of the property, there is that stone wall. That's a. That's the common boundary with Dennis Brolin, which is uh. Um, that's, well, turf specials. I don't know the all the initials, sorry, but nineteen Shire Drive. Uh, one of the things that. Is potentially maybe up for consideration is that a fence along the property line. Between these two parties could satisfy, Next Grid needs it more from a security standpoint. They want to keep people out of the solar arrays. But nineteen Shire is more to fulfill the screening provisions with the outdoor storage. Um, to see if the two parties may be able to come together to put a common fence to take care of two things at once. There's quite a bit of common um, boundary. So I did want to um, bring that point up to to the board. Um, that they're going to see, maybe we can get something done because that is still one of the open items on nineteen Shire, if you remember.
I I do, and thanks, Rich, for for reminding us of that. Yeah, I I do remember that and. Yeah, now's the appropriate time to to revisit that. And you know, I I guess I'll leave that up to the Nathan and and the owner of nineteen Shire to. You know, come to some agreement or work out something if they so desire. That's up to them.
Yeah, and and as I discussed with Richard yesterday, certainly we we have no reservations. I I actually didn't know it was Dennis Brolin. I know Dennis really well. Um, I worked with him in some of my previous endeavors. So um, we we talked about the potential of uh. I think relocating this fence to the top of the slope. Uh, as well as this fence here. Um, and since we already own the installation of the fence and and. If we can work with Dennis where he can put in the uh, protective screening slats, we could maybe kill two birds with one stone, for lack of a better terms.
Yeah, it it, I think that would be a great idea. It seems silly to have two fences close to each other that could be satisfied by one. That's great. Any other? Comments? Questions, concerns?
Was there agreement on F four to take the town out of uh, responsibility for that road?
Yes, so that that was actually one of the comments on Beta Group's um. Review letter was just a question on on maintenance. Um, certainly now that that road is solely on private property. And is only required to be used for our access or um. I guess town access in the event of an emergency, we we anticipate that that would be our responsibility to maintain.
All right, I guess hearing no. No additional comments, uh, entertain a motion to. Um, continue this at our next planning board meeting, which is. I'm looking.
March twelfth.
Thank you for the assist. March twelfth and we would do that.
We can do it at seven.
Okay. March twelfth at seven P M.
So moves.
All right, we will do a roll call vote. Um, Melissa?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So thank you very much, Nathan. Thank you, Phil. Uh, we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so our next. Item of business is a public hearing. At seven fifteen, so we are past that, so we can start that public hearing for Ford David Road. So I will hand it off to Eric to read that in.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with master law, section forty A, in the Norfolk zoning by law, section three, ten, six dot eleven. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, seven fifteen P M. Uh, Zoom access regarding a site plan application for property located at Ford David Road in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant P A L re- Realty Trust of Norfolk, Massachusetts is proposing construction of a twenty four hundred square foot, one story commercial facility. With associated parking utilities, drainage, septic and grading as depicted on the provided plans. The applicant is also requesting a stormwater management permit. Special permit to allow outdoor storage greater than one thousand square foot in area. Property is located in the C one on highway and C one C off highway zoning districts. Reference assessors map nineteen block seventy two lot fifty five. Application plans are available for public inspection at the town Norfolk website or in the Norfolk. Uh, planning board office during the hours of nine AM to six P M, Monday through Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you, Eric. Um, Rich, do you want to give us a quick overview before you pass it off to?
Sure, I can. Sure, I will uh, be passing off to Bill Buckley with Bay Colony Group. This is a commercial site plan for contractor storage. Um, the owner is uh, Lake Family Fence. Probably just add a family there, but anyway, the the Lake Fence Company. They're uh, they're currently on the corner of David Road and Pond Street. Just the property sits behind them where they like to put in a. Commercial building for storage and uh, out commercial building for storage. Along with a special permit for uh, outdoor storage. Uh, there was uh, the peer review that Phil can touch on in terms of some of those elements. And some of the comments that were uh, within the peer review report related to zoning and forward them to. About building commissioner to. Answer whether they're applicable or not, to to touch upon those. Um, one is, although the, one is about the connection to municipal water. There is no municipal water on David Road, um, or even Sherwood Drive, which is part of the circle here off of Pond Street. Although I did see a comment from the chief earlier, look at to have a fire hydrant. Um, so that's an open item that needs to be evaluated from the, from a zoning perspective. Of course, then there's an element in terms of fire protection. Um, generally speaking, um, another item is the property is split between the C way, C one off highway. Uh, we do have a provision within the zoning by law that does allow for an extension. Into the other district. So I'm presuming that. Um, the site plan, the way it's proposed, doesn't need to be changed. There's just a small little section of the, the building, which would be. Um, inside the uh, on highway district where this use is not allowed. But it is allowed um, in the off highway district. Uh, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. That's not true. Uh, it is allowed in the on highway and off highway. Scratch that, but um. I'm trying to think what other item there was. Don't recall. Those were the main points in terms of that. I will note that. There is partial fencing around the outdoor storage, that's something that we'll talk about as we get into this. The special permit does require screening of that outdoor storage area. So either. They can try to figure that out, but there will be something the applicant um, will need to address as part of the special permit for the project.
Thank you, Rich. And who do, at least we have Bill Buckley representing the uh, the client?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my name is Bill Buckley. I work for Bay Colony Group and I'm here representing uh, Paul Legg, who's also with me here this evening. And as Rich just pointed out, I were here before the the board for site plan special permit and stormwater permit. Uh, for the construction of a twenty four hundred square foot building located on the south side of David Road. It's about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety feet from Pond Street. And if um, maybe if Betsy could let me share, I can, I can put up a rendering.
Uh, yeah, you should be able to screen share now.
Okay. You see that?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is a a rendering of the uh, site and I just go over it. So this is Pond Street. Uh, down here is Route one A. So here's David Road running along the front. And this lot itself is about, again, it's a little over thirty thousand square feet. As Richard's pointing out, it's in the the C one and the um, C one C zoning district. This is the zone line. You see where just a small portion of the the building um, goes um, splits the zoning line. So the lot itself is about a hundred and eighty feet wide, a hundred and eighty feet of frontage along David Road and maybe about a hundred and seventy feet. Deep. It's not a perfect rectangle, but uh, that's pretty close. It it slopes from the, this is the west, sorry, the north arrow is up here. So north is pointing down in this direction. Which I hate, shouldn't always be north. It's easier, but so over here in the west, this is the high point on the site. That's about elevation, uh, almost two hundred, right at the lot line, and then it drops down. Toward this easterly side, but also pretty consistently along the northerly. And southeast easterly side goes down to about elevation one seventy, one seventy two. Currently walls. Excuse me, built along the side. You can see them, they're kind of those circles. And that's a boulder retaining walls that run from the the rear. All the way over here to the left as I'm looking at the plan and then down to the front of the building. Um, this kind of heavy shading, this is the uh, weather gravel storage areas. The weather gravel storage areas currently and it actually stretches down into here and a lot of this site. Is not vegetated, it's 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 sand, it's gravel. It's mostly vegetated in the rear here. And then kind of in the middle in this in this area here. So what we're proposing is this a twenty four hundred square foot building. And it's one story, it does not have a mezzanine section. For the most part, it is storage. So to that end, there is a. Truck door on either side and there are two in the rear and I'm going to show you the architectural plans in a few moments. And the. So around the outside and that is about a little less than two thousand square feet. And the office space is around five hundred square feet. So we're looking at a site that requires a total of six parking spaces. Based on the parking calculations which are up here. And and if you have your if you have your copies of the site plan, it's on sheet three of the site plan. And we're showing that parking over here on the. Right side of the the building as we're looking at the drawing, two driveways coming through the site. So they'd be able to loop around through it. It's not meant to have. Tractor trailers or anything, it's meant to have light. Vehicles coming in what what Mr. Legg uses now for his. Business. But if necessary, a tractor trailer could pull in and what it could do is pull down. And back in. Unload along the side here and then pull back out. The area is designed so the fire department can get. It's a it's not their it's not their. Ladder truck, but it's their response vehicle, so that can go all the way around the building. And without hitting anything. The we've done soil testing and actually other engine, we had another engineering firm revolve to some of the existing conditions plans that you see. They also did soil testing, so we did soil testing. Conducted in the frontier, this is where the septic system would be going. And soil testing was conducted in the back, so we did or. The other firm did two test bits in the frontier. And the Ted, the soils, there's there's no water. Waters, the percolation rate was anywhere from two to eight minutes per inch, a little bit. Odd or inconsistent for such a short area. In the back here, we did soil testing, witness, some of it was witnessed by the. Board of Health and we did permeability testing in the back there. And we found soils that were as fast as forty inches an hour, which is very fast. But when we sent the soils out to the lab, they didn't come back as a sand, they came back as a sandy home. So there's some inconsistency in the. Soils out here, but the water table is deep. And when we did our stormwater design, we were very conservative with the numbers. We used to to. Generate our subsurface infiltration system. The. I'll show you the building in a minute, but let me talk a little bit more about this and let me. Zoom in. So this is the building and you can see the asphalt and it's it's in the light gray, but in the rear here. So this is all currently, as I pointed out, it's already being used as outdoor storage. And in the back here, this would be more outdoor storage where we would use. Just gravel area, not impervious on the site. We we show it fenced off around the left and rear and right. Of it and it's not fenced to the front. Because of the building would be there and that would be the access to put the outdoor storage. We did show fencing over here on the right side as we look at it, so this currently comes out, one of the comments made was. We should eliminate this driveway and we can do that as well, that access, we won't need that anymore. Because we'll be connecting into the new paved area. In this point right here. And we again, we're showing a fence, the fencing you were showing is a six foot high chain link fence with slats. One of the comments was the. Design Review Board the other evening was the fact that they'd like to see black slats and we said that's fine. The there's some trees along the front, actually this sheet does not show it. But it's sheet, not one of the landscape plan, I think I'm going to go to it, so I'm going to stop sharing this one. And I'm going to share. This is the actually the site plan set. If you go to the landscape plan, this is sheet L A one. And again, let me zoom up on it. It's a little confusing and I apologize for that. A lot of these trees that you see all through here, through here, through here, these are all existing trees. That one of the comments again was a good one, we will. We will label and mark the trees that we can will save that we can save. Some of them, of course, can't be saved because of the construction, a lot of them in here and here and here. But we can certainly save these up here and I'm guessing we should be able to save a decent number of the trees in this area here. We also added street trees along the front of the site. In accordance with these zoning regulations, so it's a combination of. Little leaf lindens, which is a hardwood tree. And then sugar maples over here on the left side in front of the building. Landscaping is pretty straightforward, for the most part will be looming and seeding areas will be. It will be disturbing with some landscaping, a mulch bed along the front of the building. So so the look from the front will be. Trees. Grass and some shrubs in a mulch bed in here. The office access will be this point. And as we pointed out, you can see the doors along the the edges of it. Let me go now to. The I want to go to the. Let me show you the floor plan very quickly, it's. Pretty straightforward. So this is the building layout, this is David Road facing this edge here. As I told you earlier, this is the it's kind of small office area, most of the area is being used as storage. This can be a multi tenant building, however, right now it's projected to be a single tenant. And and this is the configuration as we sit here today, what we're proposing. This is the elevations of the building, the different elevations, and I'm going to show you. A color plan that we just got today. From the the company that's going to build it, it has some. It gives you a better feel, but at least you can see it here, what it looks like. Again, the front elevation. This is the building, even though it has the windows up top, that is just a. A feature, there's no. Mezzanine up there, there's a split block along the bottom and the front as you're facing the road. It's vertical metal panels on all sides. And. Let me. Show you. One more. So this would be, this is actually the back of the building, I should have showed you the front. This is that's David Road out here, this is the rear of the building, has the two doors. Actually, this has been revised a little bit based on the the discussions that we had with the design review. They thought a black door would look good, has a nice look. And so we've changed that so that it is a black door. And they also talked about maybe expanding the roof line a little bit. And we we've done that as well, you don't have this yet, but I'll I'll send this to Betsy tomorrow. And let me show you the. One more. This is the front of the building. I always. Have to deal with this issue, just ignore the. All the pavement and stuff and the topography, it doesn't look like that, but that's what the building will look like. So again, you can see the split placed block. In the front, the vertical panels. The black kind of see it on the rear here and the overhang as well. We show the site, we stop sharing again. And there's the share again. So as as Richard pointed out. Water line, there is no water in David Road, the water is up on the Pond Street, there is a hydrant. I think right across the street at the intersection of David Road. The site is proposed to be serviced by a well, which I think all of the other buildings in this little. Industrial Bioc are serviced by wells as. As we speak, so right now we're showing the well back in this corner here, we might be moving it. Over in this area here onto the site, this building because of its size is not sprinkled, so it would just be a small domestic service, probably an inch and a half. Need to talk to the water department about that. Of what coming into the building. The. There is a sign on the building, it's in the front here. And we're showing that if you go on sheet seven of your. Plan set, it's we took a picture of a similar sign that. That we wanted to copy on it, it has the dimensions on it, it's a wood sign, one of the comments, we the sign that we. Took a picture of which is up the street, it shows it had six potential tenants. This isn't going to have this site, it will never have six tenants, so they were saying, you know, can you? Show less slats slides and we said, sure, we can do that as well. And I think. I think that's it. I think that covers my presentation and we can open it to any questions and comments. If you'd like me, I can leave this up.
Yeah, why don't we leave that up? So you you met with the design review board recently, they did have some comments which which we received a copy of that. Did you have any concerns from them on those comments or you are going to be able to meet all those?
No, no, we got. They're all good comments, talked about pitch to the roof, colors. Signage, maybe integrating some evergreens into the mulch bed. Color of the slats, they wanted to make sure that we said they were black, marking the trees that are retained. The color of the dumpster. Screening, which is in the back here, dumpster has a six foot solid fence around it. It will be white, they want us to make sure we put that on there. So those are the. Those are the comments that I wrote down and we thought they were fine.
Okay, yeah, then I'm looking at it and that seems about right, the roof. The exterior elevations, the signage, the landscape, you mentioned lighting, so lighting just said include the light pole locations on the site plan. And the dump.
Yeah, there's no light poles on this site and they're all fixtures on the building.
Okay.
But what on the sheet, when you go to, if you go look at L T one. Some reason that layer didn't print the actual fixtures, so we'll make sure it prints the next time.
Okay, yep, I think that was it for the design review board. So I'm gonna pass it over to Phil from Beta Group.
So yes, for the record, Phil hired us to pay the group, we had the opportunity to review this. Site package here and. So we had. As as is several administrative items that I'm not going to touch on. But the the major issues that we or major concerns that we might have or more information we need. Involves these things. So we noted that there's an existing stone wall. Around the. The north and east of the site. That is going to be retained, there is going to be some, obviously some earthwork to level out the site here. So there's going to be some added loads, so we just wanted to make sure that this was. Clearly documented that this wall will be able to sustain. Those those additional loads. And we note that some some of the stones seem irregularly placed or or missing. So we would just make sure that the applicant has addressed that. So we note that the applicant is asking for a waiver for the outdoor storage area. Clearly, they have documented the. What fifteen hundred? Square feet of storage area in the rear. I think it should also be noted the amount of storage area that is existing to remain. We feel like that should be. Documented as well, as well as upgraded to the current requirements for screening and such. I know that they show a fence along the front property line, but I think it needs to be completely enclosed. And there's also, as was mentioned, the. Recommendation that the access directly to David Road. Be modified so that it comes off their their new driveway. And that closed off and also just some. Some grading of that will be necessary, so. So I think there's got to be some more detail there for that. We we did note that the the well is. In proximity to the infiltration system as well as. Noted that the there's a requirement to to have a connection to the public water. But I'll leave that up to your discussion, the. Next thing, so so if if that well is going to be moved, I recommend that. The the locations of any infiltration system or or septic systems on the adjacent lot be shown as well. Just to make sure that we're not in conflict with those. There was, so there's going to be some grading. To show that there's an accessible route from the. Handicap parking space to the building. Truck turns, unfortunately, I wasn't paying attention when you discussed whether the loading was going to be and the truck. The trailer trucks and how those going to navigate the site. But I think this should be outlined. Either truck turns or documented in an attorney plan. We did note that the fire department did provide comments. And they were okay with the layout. Except for the hydrant issue. And there were a few comments, we've recommendation for landscaping or updates to the plan, several. Several comments about stormwater, the most concerning is the fact that. Majority of the runoff right now. Blows off the north side of the site. In pretty much a uniform kind of sheet flow way. In the future, it looks like they're going to consolidate that and have it off the northeast corner there. So we just want to make sure that that's not going to cause any excess erosion or any flooding, particularly in that area. So maybe that maybe some documentation there will be necessary. If this project does not require. A stormwater pollution prevention plan, but we recommend that. Some modifications to the erosion controls. As well, so those are those are our concerns.
Okay, thank you, Phil. I I just had one quick question, so what what is the intent for the outdoor storage? What's going to be stored out there?
Fencing. Pulse pickets rails. Maybe four by four by eight, something like on that line.
Okay.
Stacked up on top of each other.
Basically fencing.
Yeah.
For his business.
Yeah.
And it's same same inside or is inside more of a working type warehouse with some storage?
It would be a working with some storage.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, those were and and those were my initial questions. And then I did want to just put it out there to to everybody on the call, especially the planning board that. Yeah, we do, we do have to make a determination at some point on the the well, it seems to. especially the planning board that, yeah, we do, we do have to make a determination at some point on the, the well. It seems to be that there is some sort of a requirement of, of whether they do have to be connected to the city water or not. And I think, um, I guess Rich, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we do as a board, maybe have some discretion on that, on that requirement, or we're still investigating that.
So I'm still investigating that, um, component. And just, uh, if you don't, uh, just quickly add to that, the, um, I just want to clarify. So the, the use is a warehouse use, which is allowed in the off highway, but not in the on highway.
Right.
And so I just want to clarify that point. I said contractors headquarters. That was not correct. Um, but as I said before, if, um, the, there is a provision where you can extend, um, into the, the other district. The issue of the water, um, will come down in terms of Bob, take a look at it, whether this should be, because it's split, there are some on highway requirements to know whether they'd be applicable to this site or not. Um, so I just want to walk through those with Bob. There, some of those, um, regard like shade trees, that's something that is a requirement on the on highway district. And extends back, it's not really on, on the highway per se, as Pond Street, you know, uh, Route one fifteen. Um, but to answer your question, Bob will need to get his thoughts on that to answer that question about the water as well.
Yep. Okay. Yeah. I appreciate you providing that clarification because that was something that, that we still are working, trying to understand what the requirements are there. Um, those were my initial questions. I, was there any questions from, from other board members? I see, I see head shaking. No.
Uh, I, I actually just have one. I noticed I was looking through the design review board. Um, notes here, and it looks like most of them have been addressed. I was just wondering if, um, it says here to consider a steeper roof pitch. Um, and I'm not sure if that has been, if that will be considered, if that's already been taken care of in the design that we thought today. I think that was the only item, um, that we didn't discuss.
Um, yes.
Yeah. Yes, they did. What? And I, I could put it back up. But what we did is we changed the pitch of the roof a little bit and extended it out.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I saw that you extended it out, but I wasn't sure if that was steeper than the original design.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comment from the board before we open it up to the public? Don't see any. So, uh, let's open up the public, see if they have any questions. Don't see any. Um, so, uh, Bill, uh, just to circle back to you. So, so it sounds like, um, you, you need to probably work on some of those comments that Phil had and, and, uh, you know, allow you, you guys work that out, set up a working meeting or whatever works out between the two of you. And then, and then circle back. Do you see any, do you see any area, major areas of concern based on Phil's comments?
I do, I do not, Mr. Chairman. I think that would be great. What we, I'd like to do is maybe have a meeting with Richard and Phil. And, uh, perhaps Bob to, to deal with all these out, just a working meeting. And then I think we could come back. Uh, maybe not your next meeting in March, but your second meeting in March, if you have a second meeting.
Um, I, that's a good question. Rich, are we? I, I think we were only doing one in March. Are we doing the second one for, for the master?
The second one was going to be for the master plan?
Right. Yeah, it was going to be master plan only.
Yes, maybe you could put us on to your first meeting in April then.
Okay.
And that will give us, the next meeting would just be too short of a time period because of, I'm not even sure how we can, how quickly we can get together, but, um, I'm sure we can have everything straightened out by that meeting and then hopefully a fairly straightforward review by the board.
Okay. Yeah, that, that sounds great. Yep. Um, I don't have any concerns with, with pushing out two months. I'd rather have you to have the time to get prepared to come back. And so that we can, uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully wrap it up. Can't guarantee anything, but hopefully all the concerns can be addressed and we can wrap, wrap it up. So.
That would be April ninth.
April ninth. Okay. So, uh, unless there's any other final comments. Um, looking for a motion to continue the public hearing for Ford Davis Road to April ninth at, uh, seven PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. Thank you very much, um, Mr. Buckley and, and, and Ms. Parities. Uh, we will look to see you both back here at the April ninth meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Night.
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 All right. Uh, let's see here. Back to the agenda. So that, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. Uh, appointments. We have, um, we have an appointment for, uh, Rob Zoda. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Uh, interview and appointment as a design review board member.
Yes. Hi there.
Hey, how are you?
Good thanks.
Yes. Um, so Rich, we got a, um, application here for a design uh, review board member. Is that, that's correct? And I know you put that in our folder.
Yes.
So.
There is a, of course, a planning board appointment. That's why he's before you.
Yes. All right. Okay. So we, yep, I'm looking at it now. So we got the, uh, request for committee appointment to, uh, the design review board. And so, so Rob, I guess just give me, uh, give me your elevator pitch of what, who you are and what you're looking for.
Sure. Um, so my name is Rob Zoda. I've lived in Norfolk for about five years. Um, you know, I've been looking for a way to get involved with the town. I reached out to Betsy about this, um, a while ago. You know, I'm interested in design. I'm interested in landscaping. I have some, you know, previous experience in that area. I work in, you know, marketing and in a more creative field. So I'm used to kind of working with, you know, within a, a brief or with certain guidelines and parameters and kind of, um, you know, decision making within those parameters, which I think, um, would come in handy. Um, I've worked for small businesses in Norfolk. So, um, you know, I, I've been involved with this community. And just looking for a way to get involved that also kind of combines with some of my, my interests and my skills.
Yeah. Excellent. Um, and so Rich, this was a, if I understand correctly, this would be a short appointment, right? Cause it, the current term expires in just a few months. So, um, and then how, just refresh my memory, Rich. Uh, you know, is this an annual appointment that we have to do annually?
No, no, uh, after June thirtieth, it would be three year term.
Three year term. Okay.
Yeah.
So it is a three year.
Yeah.
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 All right. Yeah. I just, I, some of these are annually, some are, okay. So it'd be a, so, okay. Um, any other questions from the board members? Wow, we're an easy group tonight. Very tight.
Kind of hard to do a hardline interview for, for a design.
Blaming on the, uh, snowstorm.
Yes.
I mean, I feel like I could ask you a hundred questions, but, um, design related, but, um, it sounds like you're a creative person and familiar with Norfolk and you live here. So you're not going to want anything to be hideous.
Right. You know, definitely interested in, um, preserving the things that a lot, a lot of people who live here like about this time, this town and, and kind of those characteristics. So, um, you know, really enjoyed, um, hearing the discussion about Ford David Road tonight. So, um, excited to get involved.
Yeah. Well, that's great. I mean, that's, we're always looking for people that are willing to get involved. Uh, and, and I feel like this is a real, it's a, it's a pretty low risk on all parts because if you don't like it, it's a short term, right? So, and, and if you do like it, great. You'll be back here in a few, in a few months, uh, for us to talk about this again. So, um, so yeah, it's a pretty low risk on all parts. But, um, yeah, we're always, we're always excited for people to volunteer and help out just to make our community better.
Yeah, I, before I moved
People too.
To Norfolk, I lived in Boston for seven years and I was part of the, um, you know, I was a main streets, uh, volunteer. So the Boston Main Streets, which is an economic development committee, um, for downtown areas. So, um, kind of attracting new small businesses to those areas. Um, and I did a lot of, you know, product positioning for, for those neighborhoods to, to help, you know, attract new businesses and, enhance those downtown areas. So, um, I've been here for five years, as I said, and, and looking for a way to get involved. So.
Great. Love to hear it.
Thank you.
So any, any other questions from board, audience? We got a small group tonight. There's a small audience.
Quick, let's vote him in before he changes his mind.
He's not going to change his mind. That's a really fun job, Chris.
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to, let me pull this thing back up here. To approve the, I guess it's to a, Rich, is this pending select board final approval or, or is it just?
No, no, this is, this is planning board. This is all you.
All right. So we don't have to submit. Okay. All right. So looking for a, uh, motion for, um, to appoint, uh, Rob Zoda as, uh, design revo, design review board um, committee appointment.
Move. Move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So we will do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Glad to have you.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, so, so approved. Congratulations, Rob.
Congrats. Thank you.
And Rob, I work in design, so you're going to be my new best friend.
Oh, cool. Looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you very much, Rob. You're welcome to stay on. It's a riveting conversation tonight. You're, but you're very welcome to stay on. We have a few more items.
It's going to pick up. It's going to pick up. Don't worry.
It's, it's good. So I'll crud, I lost my agenda, where to go. No, it just dropped off my screen. All right. So our next appointment is, uh, seven forty-five, uh, Christian Guston. Interview for the associate planning board member, which also has a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So Christian is, there he is. All right. So tell us about yourself.
Um, I'm also new to Norfolk. Uh, I moved here about two years ago. I lived in Norway for about seven, eight years. And prior to that, I lived over in Alaska and Chile. It was kind of traveling the world as best I could. And then I have a little girl, five. So it had a comeback to be around in my family, you know, didn't really have many people out in, in Norway, except for my wife and my daughter. And I recently came to town hall to ask some questions and I spoke to wonderful people there and they mentioned that you guys had a position open and I said, hey, looking to also get involved and just kind of see what's going on.
Yeah. That's great. It's great. We love, we love it when people are interested and excited about volunteering.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Yep. So, um, so you've been kind of, did you say you, you grew up in this area? You, you're from here originally? Is that?
Yep. I lived in Sharon and Wapo. Yep.
Okay. So you're originally from the area, then you went off, traveled the world.
Correct.
And now you're back.
I am, I am.
So you can bring some, uh, some different perspectives then, which is great.
That's for sure. I never wanted to call myself a townie and so I moved over to the next town. So. A neighboring townie, I guess.
That's a loophole, isn't it?
No, I'm telling you.
But you did leave. I mean.
I did.
You went around the world. So I think you.
Hmm.
Christian, just, just out of curiosity, your, your time in Norway and Chile, you know, like how, um, were you able to, you know, to, you know, to see and understand the differences in those sort of zoning regulations and planning ideas, right? Cause they're, they're vastly different from what we have here in the States overall, especially in Massachusetts. So, you know, not, not, not that it's entirely relevant to, to this position, but would love to hear your thoughts on any of that, anything that you might have, uh, observed in either of those locations.
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely similar to here. Um, I think people bicker less in Norway. They're a lot easiergoing, less on conflict. But I mean, I'm really not, don't have a ton of information about planning. It's very new to me. I'm also, you know, would like to learn new things. That's kind of why I chose, you know, applying for this position. I know that's, you know, it's not, uh, I'm getting any voting rights or anything like that. I just looking to learn, looking to help out. Um, so I mean, the main differences, I'm like, couldn't really point too many for you.
Fair enough. And there's no voting rights, but you get a lot of street cred. You're going to be picked, picked first in all the dodgeball teams. That's what we all encountered, I think, in town.
Good, that's, I like dodgeball, so.
And you may not.
Well, stay tuned. Stay tuned for update later on that.
Right.
Yeah. And you may not know, you may not, I mean, you might know more than you think. I mean, a lot of our questions, um, you know, we're talking about designing the downtown and what do we, what we want it to be like, or talking about different neighborhoods with, you know, new site plans. Um, you might know more than, than you think, at least for, you know, you can tell us what places are like that you've lived in and what people liked about it and how it encouraged maybe more social behavior, you know, things like that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, I would, I, I wouldn't put yourself down there. You definitely know more than, than you think you do. Um, and you'll learn a lot about the site plans because we have a lot of them.
Yeah, I, I believe it. My, my father did, uh, construction. He did, uh, he's a contractor down in Florida. So I built a few houses with him there. So I'm familiar with plans. Um, more familiar with building rather than the plans, but.
That's helpful.
That's very helpful. Yep. So, yeah, we, we, we review a lot of plans. I mean, we had a couple tonight. I mean, we, we typically have a couple every meeting. So.
Nah, I believe it.
So, yep. It's very good. Um, what was I going to say? I just lost my train of thought. Um, oh, so yeah, you're going to get, uh, you know, we, we have, you'll, you'll get involved a little bit with the public. I mean, you know, the, the sign, it's, the signs in town always seems to become a, an issue. Um, you know, we did expand and loosen those bylaws recently. Uh, but there's more work there. And, um, so, yeah, once, once people find out you're a planning board, they're going to start asking you questions about, well, what about the signs? Can we do this? Can we do that? Can we do that? And, and so you'll have to get up to speed on, on that as quick as you can. Um.
Yeah, I'm sure there's whole ones of things to pick up on. Uh, but I know that, uh, Rich mentioned something about a T drive or a team drive. So I can, you know, look at the, all the information that's out and familiarize myself with things like that.
Yep. Absolutely. So any other questions from the board?
No questions. Just want to applaud you for taking this step. It's a, you know, it's a very important one and appreciate it when people in the town decide to get involved and, uh, you know, really take charge. And, uh, you know, this goes for you as well, Rob. Um, you know, in the, the direction of the town and how it's heading. And for me, it was very important because I'm a father of four and I want to make sure that the town I live in and the town that we're administering for is, uh, one that I can be proud of for my kids and their kids and so on and so forth. So really appreciate both of you stepping up.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, unless there's any further discussion, which I don't see, I would like to entertain a motion to, um, now, Rich, would this has to go to a select board, right?
So thi- this is a joint appointment, the associate member.
Right. So we'd like to make an appointment. Right, so we'd like to make an appointment, motion to appoint, uh, Christian Guston as our. Planning Board Associate Member pending approval of the select board.
So moved.
Second.
Alright. We have a motion that's been seconded, we'll do a roll call vote, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So congratulations, Christian.
Thank you very much, looking forward to it.
And it's, it's all, um, good, next time, Christian, so I went through the same process not that long ago. You'll just go to the select board, there's three of them and you just have that same conversation and they will have even less questions for you, probably, so.
Yep, so it's not a hundred percent done deal, but it's pretty, it's pretty close.
So that'll probably be on the twenty-seventh of February, just for terms of timeline.
Okay.
Christian, but we'll do, uh, Liz already, the administrative assistant there will probably reach out to you, we're gonna let her know. Uh, about tonight and then I'm sure she'll get in touch with you too, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate you, uh, volunteering.
Absolutely.
Okay, Rich, that takes us into new business, right?
It does.
Any particular order you wanna go through this?
No, I think we could go right down the order as it's listed.
Alright, uh, so we got meeting minutes, Eric, you wanna? Take that?
Yeah, uh, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January ninth as printed.
So moved.
Alright, so, well, Eric made the motion.
A second.
There you go. Alright, so we'll do a roll call vote, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Alright. Uh, next is the twenty twenty-three annual report. Uh, so I, I, I did see that, um. It looked good, Betsy did, updated it, so it's, it's kind of a standard template with, uh, then updates for the year. Um, I know that, Eric, did you have any comments? I know, I, I'm not sure if Betsy, I'll be honest, I'm not sure if Betsy circulated it to all of us, I think she did. Uh, but I do know, I did see the email where it went to Erica and myself. So, first of all, did it go to everybody or did it just go to Erica and myself?
I don't, I don't remember seeing it, I'm just looking now to see if maybe it was one of the emails.
I apologize.
Everybody, but I think it's, it's in the, I think it's in the G drive.
Alright. Yeah, so it's, 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 I'll be, I mean, it's very, it's kind of a sta- it's got a lot of standard, uh, info in there and then it's just our updates from last year about. You know, the, uh, the variety of different, uh, appointments we had, public hearings and so forth, so it's, it's. It's just a, a brief, very brief overview history of what we accomplished in the year, so I didn't have any comments, it looked fine. So I'm.
I did not have anything when I read it.
Yeah. And thank you for pulling that together, Betsy.
You're welcome.
Uh, there it is, annual report draft. So, uh, it's really like. I wanna say the third paragraph is, is the one that has the, the bulk of the, what we accomplished over the year. If you're looking, if you pulled up on the Google Drive. So. But I didn't have any, uh, it looked good, it had any comments, I don't know if you wanna take a minute to review it or if we just, uh, if we feel comfortable to, um, approve it.
I just looked through, I didn't see anything.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I feel like we did more. It's just a lot of continuations.
That, Betsy summarized it in too well. I agree, Melissa, I feel like we accomplished an awful lot last year. Um, maybe it was just that use table was just exhausting. Maybe, maybe that's what it was.
There was a lot of exhausting talks about zoning bylaws, so.
Yeah. Betsy, next time, don't consolidate it so much.
I consolidated it until one sentence, I think. It was, yeah, I was having PTSD, actually.
Alright, um, any other comments or we, we feel good to move forward with it? Rich, do we need a motion on this or do we just thumbs up or? Not really a motiony.
No, well, hopefully you have, it sounds like everybody's satisfied with it, because we did forward it on, so.
Okay.
Where, where exactly does it go?
It's on administrator's, uh, office.
And then it goes into the town report, that, the booklet. There'll be all the different departments in there, the budgets in there, all the zoning. It's, uh. Our copy will be out, um.
It's usually around town meeting time.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I think, yeah, we're all good with it, so. We'll move on.
Perfect, great, because I sent, because I sent it off today.
Yep, thank you.
You're very competent, Betsy.
I would have made changes if necessary.
Yep. Alright, uh, Cranberry Heights, forty B subdivision, Rich, we got a bunch of.
Sure. Yes, so, um. I'll, uh. I'm gonna screen share, uh, as I. Talk to you, oh, let's see. Let's figure this out, sorry. So Cranberry Heights. Great, I tried this new setup here at home. Here we go. Let's see. I'm hoping this works. Alright, go bear with me, I tried a new technique here. Do you see Cranberry Heights, uh, cover page?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So Cranberry Heights has, this property is off of. Cranberry Meadow Road and Eagle Drive, well, which are both off of Lawrence Street. It has, um. It's, it goes back. To the early two thousands in terms of potential subdivision developments that have been tried and. Didn't proceed, um, through, fully through permitting to be approved. Um, the last reiteration of this was back in twenty eighteen. And I'm gonna scroll down as I speak to you, um, at that time. It was an open space subdivision before the planning board for twenty-one lots. And. Let's scroll that a little faster. Let's see if we get there. Hmm, I think we're a little too far.
So Rich, this was the one that was originally gonna be twenty-one units, but then because of our, uh, affordable tiered. Bylaw, they realized it wasn't going to be financially feasible and then looked at the forty B option instead, is that correct?
Alright, jumping ahead, why are you still on my, that I was.
Let's make sure this was the same one.
Yes, yes, I was getting there, now, of course, you can't see it, right?
I can see it, uh, we can.
You see the, just can't see it sideways, isn't it?
It's right. Can you rotate it?
Rich, can I just say something quickly to speak to Melissa on her comment?
Sure.
Okay, um, so Melissa, our inclusionary zoning bylaw, when they were in before us in two thousand eighteen, was ten percent. They would have had to, uh, given us two units. And then in twenty twenty-one, a citizen brought forth a citizen's petition and they changed. Uh, uh, instead of the straight ten percent, they tiered it, so with that number of units, he went from having to provide, provide two affordable units. To four affordable units or twenty percent instead of ten, and so basically what he reported to Rich and I was that. If I have to do twenty-five percent, I, and I can only get twenty-one homes in a traditional open subdivision. And I have to provide four affordables, why wouldn't I just give you the twenty-five percent and do fifty-two?
Right. Right, so this is something that we, yeah, we talked about this at a previous meeting where. That was supposed to be a more conservative view of, you know, how to get to. When the petition came forward, when the homeowner petition, whatever it's officially called, came forward, we were thinking that. Having that tiered structure would get us to our affordable number faster, but it's actually working against us. Uh, because it's not financially feasible for developers if they need to buy the tiered structure.
Well, I think it's certainly pushing some folks that would initially, their preference would have been to do something more traditional. Into larger developments that we're not able to manage as well, um. Because the difference between twenty percent and twenty-five percent of affordable units is. Smoke, you know, a, a significant difference, but he's more than doubling the amount of homes that he can put in.
Right, just by going with forty B.
Correct.
Can you see it now?
Yes. Oh, back, go back.
Back.
One more.
How about that orientation, at least, can you see it? Like it's, uh.
Yep.
See Cranberry Meadow up onto the top left?
Yeah, that looks fine.
So as, um, Susan had mentioned and, uh, you would allude to, Melissa, yes, this is, um. You know, from meeting earlier in the year with, uh, the developer, the inclusionary, uh, had. Shifted them towards doing this as a, a forty B. Uh, the reason why it's, uh, before you as part of the, the funding process. To get a, which is, which is a project eligibility letter, they're seeking through mass housing, um, they seek local comments. Um, and one of the. Best practices, just to present it to the planning board as they're in that, seeking their project eligibility letter from comments from the town. Um, I will say that I have already of submitted comments, uh, in, in terms on behalf of the town. And I discussed this at a site visit previously, that the town is pursuing changing the inclusionary back to. The ten percent, so it works with. Housing choice, as you know, which we're gonna be talking about just a little bit after this on the agenda tonight. And we. Highly encourage them to give consideration going back. Under the open space for a variety of reasons, uh, and. And those variety of different reasons are, one, based on there is priority habitat in this area, it is a tough site. Um, the way this development is proposed, it's really gonna, it's not very creative, um, and in terms of. It'll. Quite frankly, will amount to, uh, clearing all the entire site of what's there today in terms of vegetation. And, uh, will look nothing like it is today, so it's. It's, they are single-family homes, there's fifty-two proposed, they are a little bit smaller in size compared to some of the other ones. That we've seen, they're in the eighteen, nineteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot range. But not overly creative in terms of site design, um, so they are. Seeking their project eligibility letter, tonight I presented to the planning board. The comments, most in relation to, uh, the master plan and your thoughts in general, um. It will be back, presuming they get their project eligibility letter. Um, they'll be back before the zoning board of appeals in the permitting process. At that time, you'll see it again for comments, um, but this is an opportunity to, if you'd like to share comments. You know, in this phase of it, um, but welcome to do so, we can, I could follow those on to mass housing.
Curious, Rich, um, let's play out the timeline a little bit, let's say they get their eligibility letter. Um, where does that put them from a, an ability to break ground perspective?
Oh, they're. So this ninety, they're. This probably wouldn't even be breaking ground till next year earliest.
Okay, and then, so if we're asking them to think about, you know, going back to the original plan with us going back to the ten percent. Ideally, you know, we're going to next town meeting for that and then by the time it gets signed off by AG and everything, we're looking at end of this year, most likely anyway. For that to be codified in the bylaws, right?
Uh, I don't think it.
No, no, not, not that, not that long, um, it would be August. But the, the, the thing is, if it's voted on at town meeting at the May fifteenth meeting, it's effective that day, but it's retroactively effective, so. Um, I don't anticipate this being before the town till May, June at the earliest anyway. Um, and, and just so you know, I mean. This one is a little bit, in terms of going back, is not as big of a lift as maybe in other cases, because this was a. This was before the planning board in twenty-eight and it was literally at the final steps. Of being approved. And what kind of broke it then was they have to extend town water. And they're proposing to bring it up Cranberry Meadow Road. Loop it through the development up to Eagle Drive and then back out to Lawrence Street. The concern at the time was that the homeowners are all on private wells and if they get in a situation where they. Um, are blasting and so forth to put infrastructure in, that it could jeopardize their. Their, their wells, drinking water wells. Um, there's an underlying concern about contamination of Buckley man, but more likely, it's more of a reality of. Something could be damaged where now they need to tie into public water and these houses are set back quite a distance. From Cranberry Meadow Road and Eagle Drive, so from a homeowner perspective, it's a big expense if they have to then all of a sudden switch over to, uh. Municipal water, so that was, at least to my estimation, the, which, you know, failed to make a proceed back then. So. It, it's. I'm still gonna, we're still encouraging, at least at the staff level, I think it's, uh, for a variety of different reasons of. Number one, it's single-family homes about. Well, we did a housing production plan, we had ninety-six percent of the housing, the dwellings in town are single-family homes. It doesn't provide any other alternative housing, uh, while they will, they'll argue that, uh, you know, their. Price, size, square footage is still probably gonna be in the eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar range. From a market standpoint, I mean, things could change market-wise, but. Not sure what the town necessarily collectively gains by this, so that's kind of the. But, yeah, this is.
A little bit more strain on resources, to be honest.
Yes.
They're all three and four beds too, there's no two beds.
Yeah, it's just more of the same.
Correct.
Yeah, it's more of the same.
I mean, I liked at first when I saw, when I was looking through the Google Drive earlier, I liked that they were smaller. Um, in size, you know, because a lot of the houses, the brand new ones around here, thirty-five hundred, four thousand square feet, but. If they're gonna charge eight hundred thousand anyway, that, that doesn't help people and it's just creating more. Um, yeah, the strain on resources, I presume the school. Yeah.
Yeah, there is a potential strain on school, as you know, and we'll keep reiterating that point. Um, it's not a, it's not something that we really have any. It's not a reason to deny a project, unfortunately, or, or we won't look at it, um, but there is that potential strain on. Uh, school resources. Because again, single-family homes. So it's.
I think there was some mention earlier, Rich, before we, at the beginning of this, is like, is this in alignment with, with our master plan? I think there was some mention earlier, Rich, before we, at the beginning of this, is like, is this in alignment with with our master plan? I mean.
Really?
Well, I think if uh, you know, since the board, if you concur on that, I think that's, we can draft a letter to that point and have you review it and send it to. Mass housing, because I think that will be helpful, because, you know. The town has improved several forty B developments over the past few years, so, you know. To say the town isn't active in that area, we certainly are, uh, maybe years and years ago, that might not have been the case, so. It's not as if the town hasn't approved forty B projects. You know, the the town's a much different position today than it was, just like ten years ago, as it relates to forty B, so. I think your comments are worth uh, mass housing hearing about it.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's a a good next step. And, you know, just around the 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 possible contamination from the the, what was the Buckley man property, um. Are they going to be looking to do, or have they done, you know, uh groundwater testing already? Just to see if there's anything leaching over from that location to these.
So the.
Wait, hold on, sorry, just. I must have missed something like, uh, there's, wh- what's what's the potential for contamination for a site that's downhill? Like quarter of a mile from this? I must have missed that.
No, so the, the issue that came up previously, Gary, in terms of Buckley Dan, was that the homes that are there. Are on wells and depending upon.
Well, water, okay, okay.
Uh, they're on well water, that was. No, that's okay, um. And into that end, so Buckley man, as you know. Got, well, it's it's off the table and then it became weights crossing, it got scaled down. And it hasn't been that further investigation in terms of contamination over there, so it's still, it is an open question in terms of. Relating to groundwater, so it's, it's not completely gone.
I'm just curious if it makes sense to add anything to that letter.
We certainly add it, yeah, we can, we could, I could, we could have put a point in there about that.
And I, you know, I just wanna say, it's like, look, I'm not, I'm not opposed to development by any means. But it just doesn't seem like it's in alignment with our master plan. And and it it's, you know, all the things that were said, it's just kind of more the same, the price point is. Pretty high for for that size of a home and it's not, it's not enough variety, it's just, again, more of the same.
Especially now that we've tied in housing choice to the master plan process. You know, that's really supposed to be about diversity of home type and being closer to the downtown and near the train and. This is the exact opposite of that.
More open spaces, more greenways, more accessibility, a lot of. Less density with regards to, you know, proximity of units to each other, not necessarily from a a vertical standpoint, but, you know.
Right, okay. So we'll put together a comment letter with some points and have you get a chance to review it and then. We can get that off to mass housing.
Thank you.
And the previous project also not, there was no uh water main on Lawrence Street at the time. And then there was a disagreement about water main sizes, looping and to keep the pressure right, there were some issues there. Yeah, there's still um, there is still potentially a pressure issue, yes, from a elevation standpoint. So when this first came in, if, you know, Buckley man, well, I shouldn't say. Formerly Buckley Van, which is now Weights Crossing, um, they. They've extended the water line up Lawrence Street, which is a twelve inch main, so it was sized for additional. A water main laterals off it, it was eight inch lines. Um, but your point is, yes, there is still whether there might be a pressure issue um, from a flow standpoint. For fire protection, um, that 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 has, that point has been brought up. And been forward to mass housing on that point. But the water is now across, it is right at the uh. Well, it's right at the street, uh, it's on Lawrence Street now, so. So it'd be less of a a task to. Complete a previous design with water already brought up closer to them. Yeah, oh, yes, significantly less than the last time. Yes. I'll stop sharing my screen on that. So I think we have enough to draft a comment letter on behalf of the board and we'll send, we'll circulate around for review. Alright.
That sounds good.
Next item on the agenda.
Yep.
So there is a, there is a House Bill thirty five fifty five. Related to associate planning board members where they would have uh. Full voting rights similar to the zoning board of appeals associate members, so. Uh, just like the zoning board appeals, um, who have alternate associate, uh, excuse you, all associate members. If a board member was unable to vote for a particular reason, uh, recused themselves, uh, missed hearings. Then. The associate member, they can act now on a special permit, but if this were to pass, there would be. If it was a site plan or a subdivision approval, the associate member would be able to then vote. If there was a need um to meet quorum in terms of voting. Um, the one thing I was thinking about as we were talking about uh earlier, what uh Christian was in. Is the associate member runs to June thirtieth. And if there's instances where a planning board member. Maybe got voted out of office, um, didn't run again, um, this could be a a a nice. If this bill passed, a way to not potentially get those trip ups that happen from time to time where. We run up against uh, you know, the election or, you know, board members not running again in terms of. Having to hurry up on a project and it did happen, I know Chad, you were on the board, um, several years ago. Um, or, you know, you gotta rehear the whole thing, so.
Yeah, we we did have that a few years ago, where we had to wrap some things up before. The changing of the guard, because we had two, two members drop off or something like that, yeah, it was.
Ironically, it was a solar project, it was, it was you and Chris, and uh.
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, so I think if the board i- in general supports this, we can uh. Uh, alert Representative Vaughn to hopefully support this, I think it's uh. It's actually, it was uh offered up by a former. Town planner, who's now a representative or a senator, I I think it's representative or senator up on the North Shore.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Rich, it's, they don't have full voting. At all the meetings, it's it's more of a alternate fill in for for a a variety of situations.
They would have, they would have full voting rights only if needed, though, you know, they're not.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah, they have full voting rights, but not for every decision at every meeting, it'd be for. Yeah, okay. Cause that would be, that would, that would be my concern, is if, if they had full voting rights, then it's like, well, now they're a member. And now we're six, so we don't have an odd number, so then we potentially have ties, but if. If it's a fill in to make it five members when needed, that's, I mean, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it would be a fill in, so, you know, in some situations, you might have only four members, it would give the fifth, so. When the special perm, you have at least a little bit of room of wiggle there, so to speak. Um, but yeah, they would just be filling, so, um, I think this seems to be a. A good common sense uh bill, the, you know, mirror, except what associate members are uh on the Z P A.
Yep.
So we can draft a letter uh to have you review and send it off.
I'm, I, I think that's a, I think it's a good idea, like you said, I like your terminology, it's common sense.
Yeah. And since uh, what, three, no, two, no, three of you, two of you, I know Melissa and Gary were associates before.
I was too.
And you, right? Yeah.
No, I.
No, yeah, I was. Chris, Chris, Chris and Gary.
And Melissa.
And Melissa, yeah, so three, so that's.
Chris, Gary, Melissa, yep, yep.
Yeah, and then Eric, he just swooped right in.
Everything.
Yes, I was gonna say that, yeah.
Historic. So then the next item on the agenda is uh, I'm gonna get in touch with uh. Tony Di Martino, uh, Oriana Lane is, it was paved last fall, so, um. Perhaps it should be lined up to be able to uh be accepted in the spring as a. Town way.
Are we all set with the bond and everything there then?
Yeah, well, we do have to release it, but. There's a, there is some bond being held.
Didn't that have landscaping stuff as well?
Um, I. Don't.
Might have been one of the other ones.
No, that was another one, I think they had landscaping um, to be done, but we will need to do a, a walkthrough anyway, so there might. It could be some punch list items. Um, there that might need to be done, but. Well, at least I wanted to put it on the board's radar and then turn alert to select board to maybe put a placeholder on it in terms of the warrant. And if it's lined up.
Did DPW go out and look at it?
In the. Oh, they did, yeah. If you remember, oh, you might, well, they were, they were trying to pave on the weekend and we had to get them to hold off and. So that finally all settled out where they paved during the week and DPW was available to oversee the final paving.
I I, yeah, I know, I stopped by during that, the paving, um, that looked like it went well. Um, but was there anything else on the list that DPW had that you recall?
No, I think everything that needed to be done pre-paving was addressed.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any, I think we're just looking at as built at this point, I mean, there might be punch list items, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
But this is more just to put something on, you know, put a placeholder for the warrant. If everything lines up, then we can uh, you know, move that forward towards uh acceptance.
Okay.
I think Blair was speaking at a recent meeting with maybe a whole list of potential roads to be accepted.
Yeah, that's a. Yes, that's a. I'll say a supersized project, say the least.
Yeah, I think he said he had like ten, ten easy ones or something. And almost immediate ones.
Yeah, you know what I would say with easy in quotation, easy, um. When they're all, I don't know if any of these reasons, I hope he's right, we're gonna, but we do need to move forward to pick. Some of these off the list and uh get them accepted. Um, so we are gonna work on that, I don't think. Probably not May, I think that's probably something we'll have to work towards for November. Uh, but you're right, he did may mention that. At the select board meeting. And we discussed it internally in the office too as well, get these. Some of these roads accepted. Easier ones. Um, the next item is the. Inclusionary bylaw and housing choice, proposed zoning bylaw amendments. So I know that uh from the last meeting. That with town council made some adjustments in terms of, well, in terms of the order. The inclusionary bylaws first, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that one first. Um, I know Sue is online too, she had um, been working with me, helping out to go through this. In terms of making some modifications to it. Um. In the bigger pitch, big picture again, um, this is. To make it aligned with housing choice, so it 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 complies in terms of. Starting at ten units as opposed to six, which we currently have, um. It's a straight ten percent, there's not a a scaling up of the number of of affordable units. Um, it's rounding down as opposed to rounding up. And then the permit is not a special permit any longer. It would just be a permit before uh the planning board, you'd be issuing a permit. Um, and this is, is this is townwide as well, so it's. The M B T A overlay district, um, plus uh townwide, in terms of what be applicable to it. So it, the changes from the last time were really more. Which actually some of this language is embedded in the existing inclusionary bylaw. Some things that Sue had pointed out to me that really, the town doesn't have control over, you know, it's regulatory agreements. Deed restrictions, so we made sure that that lines up well, I did speak to Marissa Miller, town council. Um, she was waiting to hear from Sue, I did talk to Sue, she could chime in obviously in terms of the. Addressing the points, but I think everything is is lined up, um, based on what. Made the changes from Sue's comments, town council is fine with them too, so. I'll leave it open to the board and if there are any particular uh. Comments.
I don't have any comments, I. Think I said all my comments at the last meeting, um.
Rich, there's a few different documents in the drive that look like the same thing, are they actually different, they all say twelve thirteen. Date.
I mean, the the one, the one you should go to is the. Two, seven, February seventh, twenty twenty four version. It's all the way at the end, I know it's a long file title, but.
Is the PDF the same as the Word doc?
It is, yeah.
Okay, right.
I I I did as a PDF, so all the, you know, track changes aren't in there to.
Um, okay.
Just to.
I'm not, I'm not sure I can see which is that wording.
So it's, it's, it, if I understand, it's, it's the file that starts T H P mod. Twelve dash thirteen twenty three revised R M T C edits revised two dash seven dash two four. And then there's a, there's a.
Thumbnail, and I don't see the whole file name, even if they hover over.
I can screen share it too.
Okay, that might be good, yeah.
Or useful.
What's that? Two P, there's two PDFs, one from the thirty first, one from the eighth, and then there's a Word doc from the eighth of February, so I'm assuming that. The February ones are the most recent.
Yep.
Correct, yep.
So does it make sense to look at the Word doc?
Sure, if you want, whatever is easier to follow along, um. I can, I can open that one up and screen share if you want that one, a PDF, um.
Let's do the Word doc, markups.
Alright, I'll open up the Word doc and share.
And uh, just to reiterate, town council's gone through this proposal.
And uh just to reiterate, town council has gone through this proposed language already.
Uh, yes. It should show his markup, right?
Yeah, but I think it's already turned on. If you scroll down, I saw stuff.
Oh, you saw, okay.
Yeah, it just wasn't on that page. There.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, these are the most recent comments in terms of. So the recorded restriction regulatory agreement shall be provided to the town. We had that at the end of that section. Under the, the next one down, under, on number two. That was just one of Sue's comments, so that's why I struck it out there, just to. It wasn't gonna appear in the document itself. So this just was a comment. In terms of. As you know, if you were to uh include affordable units within. A development, whatever type it would be, um, you know, it needs to be from the exterior. Similar in, in terms of shape, sizes, coloring, materials, so forth, so that it. Blends in. But as the board did. Back uh a few years ago now, um. The uh Norway. Farms off of uh Medway Street, they did a payment in loop. And provided money. There was only one affordable there, so they actually bought out of it. That's just a.
Rich, can we go to the top of the document real quick?
Oh, sure, the top, yep.
So um. Right after you call section three, ten, eight, three. Uh, affordable housing development by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the. Following new language. So add with after it and before the. And then.
It's entirety and placing it.
After, after it, it's in between it and the.
Yeah.
Good catch.
And then if we're saying we're striking all the language completely, then that means we need to get rid of the red lines. Because we're saying str- deleting it entirely and replacing it with what's below, and so we don't. Need to show that we're making changes to what's below unless it's just for us.
I think, yeah, this is just for you. This is for you, yeah. Yeah, yep, yep, yeah.
Just wanna, just wanna make sure we're not putting the striped out language into the warrant as well.
No, good catch. Nope, yeah, that's just for you to show you the progression of the changes. A good catch on that. I'm gonna just see. That now, um, so let me go back down. This kind of follows uh number two in terms of design. I just put in that, so in blue. This requirement is only for the outside of the unit and the home site. In terms of. As I just mentioned, I think. You do all know that. I think it's in implied. Um, but just adding that sentence to make sure that it's. Relative to the outside of the home and the home site itself. I did add the home site because I wanted to make sure that. You know, landscaping packages, if there are some are comparable to market, you know, market rate, so again, doesn't uh. You know, it really. Fits in in those cases.
Um, section four, you call out E O H L C. Um, do we need to at least put in brackets what E O H L C stands for? Um, while it might not be transcribed into the actual bylaw itself, it would just be good for point of record.
Well, let me just scroll back up. I thought I caught it earlier.
Oh, yeah, you did. That's right. Perfect, thank you. Good catch.
This one where there was a lot of uh strike through was just saying affirmative fair marketing plan. A lot of that stuff was outside the town's purview, so we uh. Remove that. Guess I put a space in, I guess the next one. Was it needed because we talked about it up top?
Next question about timing, is that. Generally not prescribed here and it's in the uh conditions?
We have done it in conditions before, um, but it does talk about timing.
Three is a single sentence, just as one feasible, which we provided concurrent with the development of market rate units. Yeah, because sometimes they would deliver the affordable units after the project was done.
In my experience, many of them will deliver the affordable units if I have buyers. So the permits have been written that the first affordable unit has to come before the fifth house. Um, but in my experience with the, the developers that I've been the lottery agent for. I have had buyers ready, so they've gone ahead and done affordable units before they've been required. But we do tie it to the number of units.
Okay, but the timing could be more specified in the, the conditions themselves. For the project.
You could. You did on the, the one that Sue was working on now, you did on Hill Street. And then. There was timing. That was tied to, there was several payments in terms of Norway farms. So it wasn't a uh a lump sum. I wanted to recall, I think there was four payments, maybe?
Yes, after a certain number of units sold.
After a number of units, yeah. So that's good. It's the blues era comment on one, right? If first refusal um. Appear in the final version. And I just. Can clarify that based on who provides or prepares the deed writer?
This is just a formatting comment, Rich, but you're, on that page right there, your ones and twos are also lined up with your Ls and Js and Ks. I mean, shouldn't those be indented, those paragraphs? The one and two paragraph, shouldn't they be indented? Because they all line up with the. Yeah, at the top there, you got one and two, right? Paragraphs one and two, they're numbered. But shouldn't they be, I mean, they all line up, should they not be indented? From the, from the letters?
Yeah, we can uh.
I mean, it, it just makes it easier to read when you're, I mean, it. When you're looking at, it's just a formatting issue. It's not a content issue, but.
Yeah, I will have uh, that's the uh assist with the formatting for me. Before final delivery.
Yeah. Because they're all lined up as, i- it's just, it's a little. You're like, wait a second.
It might be helpful to, to understand that it's falling under a letter, that it's not its own separate.
Right.
Great point.
Right.
Yeah. No, I can make that.
Easy change.
Yeah, yeah, no, yep, no, that makes sense.
It's not just on this, it's not just on this page. I saw it up, up above. It's just. It, it. Looking at it here, but. Okay.
No, I agree. I, I, I know what you're saying.
So Sue, Sue, did you have any other comments on this?
No, just to say that what I, what Rich and I really worked at together was. Um, and, and it came from the existing bylaw. There was a lot of different things that were in here. That the town really doesn't oversee, so rather than leave them in here, it was our opportunity to clean it up. And, and get it out. Um, you know, i- in the prior document, it spoke about tax returns being. Received by the town of eligible buyers. You know, none of that, none of that stuff can happen, so that's really what we. We worked towards then to try to make it as streamlined and for folks to understand it. Um, I also provided Rich. With uh an affirmative fair marketing plan that I've done for a development, uh for a, a small development. And um, an approval letter from E O H L C, just so at some point. Everybody can kind of take a look at that and understand the steps that the developers go through. To, to have the lotteries and the approval process and how involved E O H L C is in it.
And so that's the, 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 the text content of the, the changes, uh, the one comment, or maybe it's a little more than just one comment, but. I know there was. You know, there was discussion in terms of. You know, we're, we're going from, you know, twenty twenty-one, which had a scaling up provision or lower. Um, starting point. And this is going back to be more in line, in line with the way it was. For the most part, um, prior to the zoning amendment twenty-one. Um, but what I'm offering is suggestion to the board and discuss this with Sue. Is that one of the things that was mentioned in the housing production plan. Actually, the previous plan was carry forward to this forward. Um, how is the new plan that was. Was to look at incentives. To create additional affordable housing above the ten percent. Threshold, um, but do it through an incentive. So incentivize somebody to do it as opposed to. Taking away from the density of the development and, and the rationale for that is uh, you know. When you're doing development, it's, it's, you know, it, it's primarily tied to um. Numbers, um, and financial feasibility and whatnot, and. Interesting enough, I just, we just got the audit. Um, cost evaluation of Lakeland Farms, which is off of Cleveland Street. And whilst forty Bs are capped, it was three and a half percent was the profit. After the cost certification that was done, between all the development expenses. And what was, what was um the sale price on the unit, so. The uh, so these numbers in terms of finance are quite uh tight. Um, and so, looking at if we want to try to be creative and create additional affordable housing. Is create incentives to do that, and so. Uh, what I suggested to the board and I know Sue has talked to myself to the trust. Is to try to look at some options for the town to consider at a future town meeting to create incentives. Um, to do that, um, which the overall goal would begin to increase the. Total housing, affordable housing inventory for the town. But do it through a non forty B option, so I, I do want to, you know. Make that point tonight with the board. This is not a one, one-off, one-done, um, in terms of the inclusionary bylaw.
We gotta think out of the box.
Well put.
Incentives sound like they're just, that sounds like a great idea. I think it just, it comes across better too, to developers. You know, when you're incentivizing them to do something, but you're not requiring it, or the state's not requiring it, or. You know, without actually fully understanding their particular financials. Um, which, you know, vary from developer to developer, so um, I think that sounds like a great idea. In general, I think I just like that better.
Yeah, and the, and the, the one plus for us now in terms of, you know, well. We're dealing with housing choice, but there are a lot of communities. Dealing with trying to craft their bylaws to comply with housing choice. And some towns already have incentives built in it, so we can kind of look to those to see. What works and might work for us, you know, it's not one size fits all, but. There's more of that information available to us to, um, to take a look at, um, for consideration, so.
Um, and the other thing is the, I don't know, is Peter Diamond on with us tonight, Rich? I can't see everybody.
Yeah, I see him.
Okay, hi Peter. So, um. The, for those of you that don't know, Peter is the citizen uh that brought the petition forward. And Rich and I and Peter have met a couple of times now because uh, you know, I just think that it's. That Rich and I just feel like it's the appropriate way, you know, you don't want to show up in a meeting and. And speak to something that he worked hard on and did a lot of investigation on in twenty twenty-one. And show up and say, okay, well, we think everything should be changed, you know, Peter's a colleague and. And so we've had some great meetings and some great input, um, and you know, I think that. One of the, one of the difficulties is, is Peter has really put. A lot of time and effort into gathering informations and gathering information on what other towns are doing. Uh, where they are with their affordable hu- housing numbers, uh, you know, I, I. I feel like if you're at nine percent, it's much easier to be more selective with a tighter inclusionary zoning bylaw. Than when, than when you're where we are, um, but. You know, he, he's been a terrific asset because he's providing us with some information that. Um, you know, he's read up on things, we're reading up on things, so at our last meeting. Which was uh the day before our huge nor'easter, um. We sat down and, and you know, we talked about the different things and the different ways, and at the end of the day, we may not agree. We still may not come to an agreement on what we think is best. Um, but collectively, we've worked together to try to understand. Uh, where each party is coming from and to gather as much data as we can before we get to town meeting. And, you know, both sides of this kind of stand up and discuss it.
Would this maybe be an easier sell with the incentive piece at this time instead of the promise for down the road?
Um, you know, I, I don't know because we, I don't know that we'll have the information. I think what. What Rich and I committed to is that this bylaw needs to almost be fluid as we gather. More information, although we're a very active town with a housing trust and. Uh, a local action program, uh, a local initiative program. You know, we're a smaller town that, you know, and really until we had a town planner that came to us from a larger community. That had been through a, a lot of these types of changes. We just really didn't have the. Somebody with the experience that Rich has to, to, you know, try to guide us down different roads and. And teach those of us that are novices in, in planning, you know, the different layers of things and. And why a certain project maybe had, came in as a forty B and why it couldn't be a, a traditional subdivision and. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure, Eric, to answer your question that we really have all of the information that we need. Um, but from my point of view, I think we should go forward with it in May. And, and express that are, you know, is that we need to constantly be looking at this and. Looking at different ideas and collectively working together to see what is really the best way to provide us with some. More affordable housing, and it's not bringing in fifty-two single-family homes.
If I may comment through the chair, this is Peter Diamond.
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, um. I am disappointed that we're switching back to the ten-ten on the affordable housing. And uh, for a number of reasons, I, I feel the town needs more affordable housing. And uh, I thought the scaled. Uh, inclusionary zoning bylaw would help to do that. Because if you take a hard look at it, the. Because if you take a hard look at it, the ten-ten, you do not gain at all if development is done. And you get ten percent affordable housing units, you don't gain any affordable housing units. You maintain a s- an even level. And then I'd like to point out, uh, about eight forty B un- um, developments were done with the ten percent um, in place, and that had nothing to do with them doing forty B. It was other factors. So it's not fair to say that Cranberry Heights or any of the other forty Bs are just coming at us because they have to abide by the inclusionary zoning by law. It didn't affect them at all. They they went forty B for other reasons. And then um, you just approved Ariana Lane, I believe. Or discussed approving that road. There's an example where nine houses went in. And I don't believe we, we got any affordable housing units over there because of the nine. Under the new zoning by law that we approved in twenty-one, we would have captured at least one over there.
Well, that, that's true. You're right. But then you're get, you're gonna get the developers like, well, I'm just gonna build five. I mean, so, yeah, I mean, you're very, you're very correct, but it it it's somebody's gonna, they're, the developers are always looking to to find a way to to avoid it, right?
Okay.
Whatever the limit is, but, you know.
And uh, we did have a good discussion yesterday. I like Sue and Rich's idea for incentive-based inclusionary zoning or adding additional units uh, to our affordable housing stock. So we, we need to take a hard look at it. I don't think this ten-ten is the right fit across the board for the town in Norfolk. Thank you.
Yep, no, I I appreciate, I appreciate that, Peter, and I, I definitely appreciate you, Rich and Sue, all three of you talking and 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 working through it. And we may not see eye to eye on everything, but but that's what makes, that's what makes this town great, is everybody has, feels, feels open and available to voice their opinions. Um, and I, you're right, at the ten-ten, we don't gain anything. Absolutely, a hundred percent right, we don't. But what we have seen is, we've seen, we've seen and we've heard from developers that, hey, your new your new uh, bylaws have become more restrictive and and it it's making it harder for us to uh, to build a profitable development. And maybe some of that just had to, you throw COVID in there and maybe you could blame some of that on COVID, I don't know. Um, but that's the feedback we're getting, and that's also the results we're seeing. Any other board members, anybody else? I mean, it, I'd open to Florida, anybody. I mean, there's only half of us still left on the call, so I'll open to Florida, anyone.
I mean, the last part of what you said there, Chad, is what I keep coming back to, which is that when we talk to developers. They're the ones telling us that they are not, it's not financially feasible for them with our tiered structure, right? So even with the best of intentions and using data and moving forward and getting that approved, it sounds like um, you know, it doesn't work for the developers. And so we need to be working with the developers. Um, and forming relationships with them or continuing relationships with them. Uh, to be able to share that information back and forth so that we can actually have some meaningful development that we want to have in town, that folks, the residents in town, uh, as we've been talking to them throughout the master plan process. Um, that we're doing what they want, you know, we're working on their behalf. Um, so I think it is important to have those conversations with developers, and unfortunately, the developers are saying that that is a big part of why they're not developing here. Um, so I think we need to listen to them, we need to do what's best for the town as well, but um, if they're saying the tier doesn't work, then, you know, we need to go back to the drawing board and find something that does work.
And Rich, we used to have a buyout clause previously as well, right?
We still have that. Yeah, payment and those, that's Yeah, it's only applicable to uh, ownership, it's not for rental.
Got it, okay.
So, if the board is satisfied, um, comfortable. You can vote to recommend to put this on the warrant. Or you could do together if you want, but I'm gonna, whatever however you want to approach, I'll get to the
I, the next. We probably could do it in pieces.
Um, okay.
So unless there's any further discussion, I would, I would uh vote to uh, recommend to put this on the warrant for um, as printed, I, we, obviously, we don't have an article number, but it'd be the uh strike, you know, strike the language in section three-ten dash A dot three and replace it with, with what's presented. With the modification that we just made tonight. Um, that basically is just that one word added, not to the article though, just the one word added to the warrant. To have a, I guess, entertaining emotion to, to uh to get this on the uh, warrant for select board.
So moved.
Do a second.
May I ask a question? Is is this the, the actual uh, or is this a continuation of that hearing for this, or is the, the final hearing still to come?
It's, oh no, you'll have a, you'll have the hearing.
Okay.
This is
to, to have the further discussion.
Yes, correct, yep, put on the warrant and then there'll be a hearing.
In that case, second.
Okay, so we uh, motion made, seconded, uh, any, any other discuss, before we vote, any other further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that has been uh, recommended and to move forward to the next step, that doesn't mean it's a done deal, it's just, we're, we're pushing it forward. It's gonna go to select board. Uh, we still will have to have a public hearing, we'll obviously have to go to advisory. Uh, so uh, obviously, there could be some minor changes to come.
So the next item related to housing choices, the uh is actually the MBTA overlay districts themselves, there's two proposed. Uh, one is Town Hill in the center of town, the other one's Pondville. Uh, from the last planning board meeting, we reviewing what town council made some adjustments to give the board waiver authority um, for some of the underlying requirements within the bylaw. If recall the reason why, if you see um, in section B in the middle of table here, I'm sorry. Green or the way underlying zoning requirements for the purpose of this bylaw. So there may be situations where a development ends up being just strictly residential. And some of the requirements really aren't applicable for a commercial development, I'm, excuse me. Some of the commercial requirements aren't necessarily applicable to residential development. Um, but there may be a situation that could come up where the project is both residential and commercial, so you don't want to completely remove the underlying zoning requirements as it relates to screening trees, um, setbacks. So it gives the board the discretion to take it on a project-by-project basis. So that's what um was the last adjustment that was made, um, as well as uh, the parking. When that comes up, there may be some waivers that would be appropriate. Um, but it gives the board, again, it would give the board the discretion if a project were to come forward. And then the other changes that we did add in. I added the uh, the fifteen Rockwood Road into the center. The Town Hill Overlay District.
Right, okay.
I can share.
And I think you've mentioned you ran the calculations and it didn't change anything, or it wasn't enough.
That's correct, yep. Yeah, I, I um I gave the map with the adjustment to Horsley and Witten, and they reran the numbers through uh the, the model, and it did not change at all.
Okay.
So this is the map. Open this up, you can see it. So this is the I'll zoom in and then zoom out.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the B one, here I'll zoom in into the, you see the, the map on the screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So I guess I call it maybe
So it's the green hatch mark?
Yeah, right, this cyan green, yeah, something like that. Um, and then
Greenish on my screen.
Yeah, go, I'll go green, I'll, I'll go along with that. Um, so you could see that, that parcel there
Yep.
is the um, the one that's fifteen Rockwood Road. And then down in Pondville is this area here. Just kind of a I guess I call it, yeah, it's kind of purply color. And then you scroll over. Here's the legend with both districts. Note on it.
Okay.
As overlay districts.
Can you go back to the Pondville area where?
Sure, yep.
It's like a pinkish purple on my screen. Okay, I see it, yep.
Yeah, right here.
Okay. Thank you.
And so this will become part of one of the articles to, to change the zoning map, yeah, those zoning layers. I'm gonna go back to the document itself. Again, we went back through and provide some of the definitions that we're gonna keep to bring forward. Which are gonna be added to section two-point-one, the definition section, so affordable housing. It's a affordable housing unit, as of right, we didn't have. We do make adjustment to lot, we do have a definition, but we've broadened the definition.
This is another article though, right?
Yeah, it's another article, right, yep, it's related, but it is a separate article.
Right, just for clarity, it's, it's a separate, so now we're on to our, our third article for planning board. But this is the second article that's related to the MBTA and, okay.
And the So when I submit the, so I submit the transmittal memo to the select board in terms of putting these on the warrant. As we discussed a few meetings ago. Um, the inclusionary will be by itself.
Yep.
As one article. And then these would be one, one vote, you know, there would be several articles, but, but they are tied together. In terms of the overlay district, so it would be one article, two articles with subparts, I guess, like we had done. That was a couple of years ago when we did some of the other B one changes.
Okay.
Cause they're interrelated. Um, so park, uh, parking surface is one that's recommended, um, for adding that. We're creating residential dwelling unit, and we're making some adjustments to that. Um, this article here again goes in and establishes the MBTA overlay district. Uh, and then this article here. Um, I'm actually gonna change, I'm gonna take this well, actually, sorry, just jump ahead. So this, the zoning map, I'm gonna swap out. Yeah, you saw it tonight, include that in here. So that'll go.
I'm, I'm just going back, I can explain definitely. Why, so why don't we want to make this all one article? Cause it all needs to be voted, right? It, it, you can't vote one without the other, right?
Yeah, it's one article, but there are different sections that we're making amendments to.
Gotcha.
But if you rename all these things, PB one, and then PB two, A, B, and C, we can kind of see other group together, what belongs with one.
No, I, I
XX.
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah, I could.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm just asking, again, I'm just asking for clarity, I mean, I they all need to be voted together, so at town meeting, we'll say these all, all these articles are um, are together, they're separated because they're different sections of the bylaws, but they all relate to one another and should be voted as a, as a whole. Um, and, and that's gonna be the same question that advisory is gonna ask when, when we go to them about this. Is why aren't they lumped together?
By excluding the inclusionary zoning bylaw for the percentage though, correct?
Yeah, correct, right, that's, that's different, yeah, yeah, yes, thank you, Sue, yes, thank you, right, right, that's, that's different, yep, yep.
Yeah, you know what I'll do is, I can, I'll email the um the B one warrant from a couple of years ago, cause if you remember, we had there was, I want to say maybe four or five section changes, but they're all interrelated. It was one article.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm just, I'm just raising the question for clarity, just for, I mean, I'm I'm guessing others have the same, but why, why couldn't we lump it? And it, I get it, I understand why it's not. But, and, and we just have to explain that to when we go to advisory and also town meetings, like, look, they're all related and uh, should be voted all as a whole. Uh, they're separate articles because they're different sections of the zoning by law, and it was, it was, uh, we, we decided to break them out. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
And I
So like I said, this will
Maybe I'm the older one with the question, that's fine, it's getting late, but, it's fine.
No, I, I think, i- if one doesn't pass, they all probably don't work, they don't pass.
Right.
Right, so.
Except for the first one with the
Right, right, no, I hear you, this is, you know, it's, it, the zoning choice articles, it's, it's all or nothing.
That's right, that's right, a- and, yes.
Well, we just actually
Jay will tee it up that way, and I'm sure Jay, we'll, we'll talk to, to, to Jay, and I'm sure he'll get a teed up that way, yeah.
Yeah, and actually, if I we just got, we just did uh, yeah, I, I, I'll, I could show just for references in terms of, you know, what we did. One up, one vote. Yay, nay, but different sections, so I can provide that. And like I said, this is coming out, I'm gonna put, I'll put in the zoning map that I showed you earlier.
Yep.
So these are, those are gone. So if there isn't any other questions on that, if you're okay, again, same thing, vote, put it on the warrant, and then it'll be back for you for hearing.
I don't have any questions, I'll open it up to uh, really to anybody, I mean, anybody on the call, board, Peter, Susan. Okay, I don't.
Uh, this is a pretty big change, I mean, to us, it's not new, you know, it's been going on a long time. I'm just wondering how many people in town really know that this is happening. Um, so I'm wondering if before town meeting, um, whether it's advisory or, you know, some other time that we'll be talking this through from beginning to end, if we send out um, communicate out to folks in the community that, you know, this is a meeting that you don't want to miss, you'll have a lot of questions for sure at town meeting, and this is the chance to hear it. Period, um, or ask their own questions, if, you know, if it's at a meeting where they can. Um, but something like that, I just, I saw that Rhythm did that recently, and I don't I haven't talked to anybody that went to that meeting. Um, but I can ask some of my friends in Rhythm how it went, and, you know, if they thought it was worth having a meeting separate, but the town planner hosted something for the entire town, knowing that they were going to have a lot of questions, uh, more so in Rhythm because they're not really an MBT community, so they had to explain that as well, but um, just thought we might want to not have the first time that people here at be at town meeting.
Well
Yeah, no, we're gonna have to
We'll have to have a public
Yes.
Yeah.
But there will also be other, we, we do need to get the word out. Yep.
Right. Yeah, so, yeah, we will have a Yeah, we will have a public hearing, but I, I. Yeah, that's true, maybe we need to have a. What, what do we, what do we do for the B one? We did like public workshops. Um, and and they don't have to be in person, they could be virtual, but yeah. It's a good point.
No, we will, uh. That'll be necessity. For sure.
Yep. Thank you, Melissa.
Cause if you're, uh. I'm sure some people are reading the Boston Globe, if they get it, and uh. It's definitely. Become more of a. Covered by. You know. News outlets in terms of what different towns are doing.
Milton changed their town meeting because of the. A ledge snowstorm we were getting. Uh, I think everybody is watching that. That's gonna happen tomorrow night instead of tonight. Um, I will say, Melissa, I've heard through the grapevine that this was not well received by rest, Rhythm folks that. Were involved in the discussions.
I know, I can only imagine, they don't even have a train.
No, yeah, they're, they're marching on Boston. Sounds like. It was, I get it, I mean, Rhythm is. You know, they're an adjacent community and that's, yeah, uh. That even. This is definitely, uh. Well, and as you know, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll educate. Um, residents, if they haven't heard this, uh, this was originally. Out there in terms of legislation called housing choice. And then. The Attorney General. Wait in and said, well, well. Towns, it's not a choice. You need to comply with it, and uh. Again, it was on a housing seminar this morning with Sue and uh. The, the AG is, uh. Getting ready to, um. Yeah, actually, ready to fight, and actually, they, they have a whole. They have opened a department relative to compliance with this too.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so they've, they've already. They have already anticipated geared up and um. They have a. A department. That's gonna be. Working on a housing choice compliance if towns aren't compliant, so.
And there. There's a lot of communities when we go to these different meetings that are, are really feeling like their hands are tied and not. You know. I, I, I think. Aren't even able to get to the point that, that Rich has gotten this to with. The districting and, um, so I think it's gonna be an interesting, it's gonna be an interesting. Time in our government. You know, can they, can they? Force communities to have these districts? And if you don't bring a lawsuit or restrict funding that you get. It's all, it's all kind of new. New stuff.
It is. So. If there are no further comments, uh. Be a motion to put this off or. Move to the warrant?
I don't have any further comments, anyone else?
No.
So I will, uh, entertain a motion to. Move the various articles presented. Uh, regarding the uh, over the housing choice overlay. It's not only a choice, but the overlay to, uh. Recommend to the warrant for the select board.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded, any further comments before we vote? Alright, we'll do roll call, Melissa.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And the chair vote time. Alright, Rich, you got several articles there. To move forward to the next step.
Yes. Alright, on to the next article. So. I have, you see a use table before you?
Yeah, I thought we were done with these, Rich.
Well.
You're killing me.
I'm, uh. Unfortunately, the bearer of, uh, bad news.
Such interesting material, Chad, come on.
I, I thought we were, yeah, put a ton of work and effort in these use tables, I thought we were done, but we're, we're never done, that's fine, go on.
Well, I'll give you the, uh. The latest in terms of why I'm showing you this use table. Um, yeah, you just spent a lot of time in, uh, last year working on the use table, and there was a lot of eyes on this and. And. It went to the Attorney General's office, the Attorney General approved all of the zoning changes for the use table that we submit, that we did last year. In May. And then I got a call from a engineering company. Who is working on a contractor's headquarters project off of Shire Drive. And he said, uh. Yeah, I thought contractors' headquarters, it, it looks like it want, in the table, it says yes, and then another part of the table says no. What? Do you know? Is that, what's, what's, uh? So what's the case? And so did more looking in, and in effort to create the exhibits that we did last spring and the last article twenty eight. Which was to just fill in knows. Where the blanks were in the table. We end up putting in knows. Where there should have been yeses. And this, this is all related to the C one. On highway, off highway. So working with town council, reached out to the Attorney General, explained the situation to her. And. Said, can we just change it? That wasn't the intent. And from multiple conversations with the Attorney General. He was. Pretty perplexed and had to go to the bench to try to figure out. What to do, cause she already. Has submitted her approval letter back to us. Um, so. Back and forth, the conversations from the Attorney General was, well. If you are, uh. Thinking about putting an article on the Springtown meeting, I would suggest to do that. And so here I am before you tonight. With an article, and I will tell you, um. Wouldn't enough happen, so. If you look across the table. Last spring, we did not have. A further subdistrict of C one dash one A. Off highway. And C one dash one C off highway. We didn't, last spring, we had C one on highway, C one off highway, C one B, C one D. Well. C one is on highway, off highway, and then off highway is further broken down as to four different districts. And needless to say. There was uses that were listed as no's that should have been yeses. So. On this table before you, it. It adds a C one on highway. C one C off highway. I did add in on highway, off highway. And goes back and changes. But should be. Yes. So, I don't know, it's kind of, can you see the, the bowl?
Is it more simple, just leave the blanks as blanks and not? Try to do the work to fill it in and then adding extra columns?
I don't think we can do that anymore.
You know. We really can't do that anymore, um, that was one of the things we thought of. And I'm gonna scroll down so you can.
So have a quick question, Rich, so has the Attorney General said, no, you need to just go back to town meeting or? Or have they said, we're still working on it, but if you just go to town meeting and vote on it, then it's done?
Well, as of this afternoon, we still haven't heard back from the AG, so, um. Reading through the tea leaves.
Okay. So they haven't given you an official response, and so we're just trying to be proactive with the advice that, hey, if we go to town meeting and just. Get this approved, then, then we're done. Okay.
Yeah, but there are some things in here that we, you know, going back through revisiting all this. You know, like. These, these are special permit uses.
Right.
That. Should have been in the C one A, C one D. So it's not just. There. There are not substantial changes, cause this is what was voted on, the town meeting with the previous two articles, it's just, it wasn't. By the way, that last article was done, it ended up. Creating the conflicts. In retrospect, we probably would have been better off not even having a table for twenty eight. We would have just. Produced the final table in the end, but we did, and we relied on that exhibit. To town meeting, and that's where. It got us tripped up. With this article, so. All the way through. You can see. You know, there was, um. Like, personal kennel. There's, there's some other ones that are. Yes, is it should be knows too? Uh, and just to let you know. Yeah, it's not gonna be fun. I'm not looking forward to May fifteenth or whenever I have to go with the board, the advisory board.
But yeah, there's a whole bunch of no's there that are crossed out, and yes is. Oh, that whole line is crossed out.
Yeah, that whole line is really not necessary, we should have got rid of that last year. Because it's, we already have office use. Um, but there are some slight changes that do make sense too. Um. And particularly around the use here, you see adult business and marijuana overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, that is in the C dash one. Off highway. Um, it is covered in another section of the bylaw, but we, it, so. Cleaning this up is important too, because now this table matches up with the bylaw. Yeah, so. Kind of, so. As painful as it may seem, and it's definitely painful to me, um. The thing to do is to bring this to town meeting, to, to. Clean this up.
It'd just be housekeeping changes, sorry, I don't mean to giggle.
No, I, I, yeah, that's, that's kind of what it feels like.
Well, essentially, it is housekeeping, yes.
Yeah, so.
Keeping changes plus, plus we found some just. Well, I guess that's the housekeeping, never mind, yeah.
But I will tell you, there is a real impact by doing nothing, because. For example, in the odd highway district. Contractors headquarters is a yes, and then the way the table was, the previous table, it's showing no and off highway. When in reality, it should be a yes, so like. It, it needs to be fixed because we're, you know, there is a ripple effect with businesses, so. We. We've been, and I have been in contact with the businesses that are. They are gonna be coming before the planning board, but understanding that we really. This is not a. Not optional. Thing, and I think when I retire someday, I'll be talking about this on a beach. Dark days of being a planner, um, for sure. But. We gotta get, it needs to be done to get this right. I don't really have a. Don't much else to tell you.
So, and I think. The C was, it was C one A and C one C, right? Those two columns were missing?
Yeah.
So isn't it fair to say then that everything in those columns should be bold? Or, or you didn't bold everything, why, why did you choose not to bold some things and?
No, they should be. It's hard to see they are, yeah, they are bold.
Okay, it's gonna be really hard to, to show this. Like Eric said, i- it's like with all, with all the data, with all the boxes filled in, it's really difficult to see, but.
Rich, your headers are, are bold for C one A. C one C, but the, all the text beneath it is not necessarily bold.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
All the row entries beneath them should be bold in those columns.
Let's see, so that's not.
I just didn't follow how we got those new districts. That we didn't discuss last time.
Yeah, so they're not new. Um. They're there.
We missed it.
We missed them, so I'll show you. Spare with me a second, unfortunately, I'll show you, um.
Make this the last article.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably a good idea. Well, yep, there they are, all four of them. And they're literally. So this district here, this subdistrict has no unique uses. Um. This district over here is the one where it just has the multifamily, that's the only unique thing that's there. This district over here is auto freight. Is that unique use in that? B subzone of it. And this one here is the, um. Adult entertainment and, um. Marijuana. But those are already there anyway, cause you see, you'll see in a second, they show up right here. But. Um, they weren't in the use table. And then. There's an appendix in the zoning bylaws from years ago that's there, so. This. Yeah, so. They exist. It, it's not as if they don't exist. So if I had to go in the magic time machine, we would have had these in there.
So what is? Well, so what is, what is C one off highway then? Cause I get C one on highway, what's C one off highway if you have the four? Other on highways?
It's. This is the, so this is all, this is all off highway?
Right.
That's off highway, that's off highway, that's off highway.
But.
And then they're broken down further.
Okay, so, but do we need to say C one off highway? I mean, does that column need to exist? You mean, is there?
Does.
Is there ever a situation where it's just C one off highway, but not A, B, C, or D?
It is, let's see.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand why, why we still need the C one off highway at all. Because it's, it's either has to fall under A, B, C, or D.
Rich, so I'm looking at the five, five fifteen map that we're looking at, and we don't have any on highway or off, it's just C one. Or one A, B, C, D.
Would you have to look at the five?
The one that we showed the new MBTA overlay zones. In the drive. C one and then forced sub C ones.
Oh, they don't have the label there, okay, I'll have them make the label.
No, but look at, look at the legend.
No, but go over to the left.
It does have C one. Yeah, it doesn't have off highway, I'll have them.
We have more zones than we have here?
Yeah, there's. There's C one. On highway. And then, I know. I'm thinking about what you just said, Chad. Um. If we deleted the. C one off highway, and then we just had the C one A's, A, B, C, D.
Right.
Um.
Put them in order.
Yeah.
Because I, I just, I don't think, I don't think we have just a C one off highway. It has to be A, B, C, or D.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But I don't think, so it's like that whole column, C one off highway should just. Obviously, you can't just delete it from here, we gotta strike it out and say.
No, I know what you're saying.
This should have been broken into these four when we set this up. We didn't do that.
Yep.
And, and. And, and now we're doing that.
Yeah. So then. Why don't we do this, um? Why don't I just ask you to? Put a placeholder on to make an adjustment to the schedule of use, and I'll get back with town council. Um. And I know Bob is gonna. Look at it. Too. Then we can. I can ask about. Actually, that idea. You just get rid of C one off highway entirety.
So what do you mean by placeholder? You want, you want us to recommend this to?
Yeah, to be put on the warrant, so at least.
Which means we could always pull it if.
Yeah, you could always pull it off.
Yeah, if A G comes back, said, ah, you guys are good. Which I doubt it, but, right. Wishful thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just to put a placeholder so we can go. Picks it up, but I am gonna ask about, I'm gonna think that. It feels like that should be. That would take away, um.
Well, I think it explains what happened. I mean, it's like, it kind of explains what happened. We lumped C one off highway together. And then we found out that it shouldn't have been lumped together. Because there are some specific uses to each one of those. And so now we need to break it out. And then, and then also while doing it, we found a few other housekeeping items that needed to be cleaned up.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Discussion comments. From anybody?
I do have one more that hopefully is a positive one.
You have another article? Or another comment?
No, another article.
Okay.
Two articles.
Wait, two more after this?
Yeah, they're very simple, though.
Okay. All right, um. Uh, I would like to entertain a, a motion to. Uh. To put the. Use table. Article presented on the warrant. Submit to the select, submit to the select board to put on the. Warrant for spring meeting.
I'm moved. Sure.
All right, so it's, uh, any final comments before we vote? All right, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Hi.
We lost Gary. Chris?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary. I, I'm looking at my screen going in order, so, okay, I heard Chris, I heard Gary, and the chair votes aye. So that's. We're gonna move that forward.
Hmm. I think Chris is, uh, Chris, Chris said it all was the way I saw him when he came on screen, so.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'd be remiss if I said I wasn't disappointed in us. A little bit.
Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to figure out what hap, we put so much time into that darn thing, and how many different revisions on how to present it. But now I kind of understand a little bit more of what happened is we tried to lump it together.
Right.
And like I said, if. If, if Article twenty didn't have an exhibit. That had the chart filled out.
Right.
Would have. Although, but I think after looking at this, this is a better option to clean up in a better way.
Yeah.
Especially what you suggested. Chad, council agrees, that would be even better. So I'm gonna talk to Bob about that, too. Um. So. All right. The last item. Is. To amend the s- special permit. Provisions to match the. State law. So special permits through. State law, the permits. Good for three years. Our general. Section of. The zoning bylaw. For special permits is only good for one year. The only one that gets a little bit more grace is estate lots, which is two years. I didn't see it in the hard drive, so I'm gonna open it up here. Show you. You know. So pertains to section. Seven point four. These are all special permits. And then down here below is for state lots. We've had, and I know you have had, um. People back before you. Asking for extensions and renewals because. They ran out of time. And. It. It doesn't seem as if all the amount of permits evolved today. Financing, you name it. Things, the years doesn't seem to be as much time as it used to be, I guess, but. So what it would do is. It certainly helped applicants because if they don't get back to us. Uh, within the timeframe. You gotta go readvertise it, go through the whole public hearing process again, and then you've already done it. Um, for a few people last year. The Z B A has done several of them. Last year. It's not a. I think it's a good idea. Um. Just makes it a little bit easier for applicants. Homeowners like. To give them a little bit more time.
Yeah, I think, uh. What you said, a couple of things you said, strike. Uh. Kind of re- resigned with me is one is this is in alignment with the state, which. Guess that's good. And then the other is a year just isn't as long as it used to be. I mean, yes, it's still three hundred sixty five days, but. And like, the world's just a little more complicated than it used to be, and sometimes things don't move as fast as they should. So a year goes by quickly.
It does.
And we have.
If you think that's too.
Oh, go ahead. Well, we have had.
Yeah, I guess if it.
Over the last couple of years, and since I'm on the board, we have had a few that just, yeah, they ran out of time, I mean. And. It happens.
Yeah. And the distinction too, I mean, I suppose we could, uh, well, yeah, so. In the estate lot, you can grant these extensions without a public hearing, so it's not as cumbersome, but. Under the general provisions. It's, uh. If you're not within that timeframe, then you gotta. Hold a new hearing, so.
Right.
I'm. Good. But, uh. So. Okay, with. Putting that on for May, great, if not, we could hold it off, I'm just, I'm bringing it to your attention.
Is there? Um. Wh- where did this come from? What was the driving force to, was this just something the state was recommending? That towns do to be in.
No, it was just. No, it was just really internally, in terms of. You know, we've had applicants go in. You know, it's, it's come up more with the Z B A, uh, frankly, than this planning board, but. You know, they've, we've had homeowners come in to the building department. For projects they got special permits for. And. Like, sorry, you gotta go to the Z B A to get a new permit, your time has expired. It's happened on, uh. Several occasions.
So what do you think?
Are there cases where projects begin and this is a way to? Drag it out, and this is a nuisance to neighbors who. Then live near a forever construction site and were causing more harm?
No, that's. That's tied more so to the building permit itself. Um. But there might be. I suppose there could be a project. This is really more exercise in the permit. Um. You might have a situation where as a condition of special permit, you might put conditions in that. In terms of, but this is just. Starting. You know, getting that building permit. To move forward with the project. I know that the Z B A. Has. In some cases, applicant, uh, you know, some homeowners are going in for. Special permit. And the C B A puts conditions on them in terms of cleaning up the property within thirty days of an occupancy permit, so. They have. Trying to think I can send you a couple that they have done that. Most of it's governed by the building permit.
Any other comments, Gary, Chris, Melissa?
Nope, also.
No, also.
So, Rich, is this just basically like, there's a, there's a. There's something that's approved, but they don't necessarily get the work started right away? Um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't, they don't pull.
Yeah, they don't get their building permit.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I don't have any more questions.
So I guess the question I have for the board is, I mean, is this something we want to put on the? The, the spring? Warrant or? I mean, it's not a, I guess, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a hot button.
No, it's not a pressing, no, 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 no. So, I mean, if the plate's pretty heavy, you can always, we could do it till later, future, tell me.
Right.
I'd say we defer. Yeah, it doesn't sound, it doesn't feel like a heavy thing, but it's. I mean, it's ten o'clock, I. No idea if I'm comprehending this completely or not.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of feel the same way as like. I mean, since it's not a hot button or pressing matter. I think it's something that we just. We defer. Um.
Sure.
Revisit. Not, I'm not saying no, Rich, I'm just saying it's just, we got a lot.
No, I understand. No, no, I get it. No, I, I completely understand, it's not, uh.
Although I do think it's. Pretty, uh, pretty simple and straightforward. I just, we have a lot of other things that are more pressing.
You have so much time you need to dedicate towards, I get.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'll do. I'll put in the back pocket for the fall.
Sounds good.
That's enough for tonight. Myself.
Um.
You sure, Rich? You don't, uh, talk about anything else in here?
I see that, I see there's more, Rich. We have to vote on something.
Well, there are, yeah, uh, there are other things for you to vote on, but not, no. I'll, I'll be quiet.
So are there any other? Updates, Rich? Any other planner, town planner updates that? Besides the article, the art, the numerous articles?
Well, you have your master plan meeting on February twenty seventh. It will be, uh. Fully remote. Just.
Yep.
Remember that, so.
Twenty third, right?
Twenty.
Twenty seven.
Seventh, two weeks.
Okay, I don't see that on the note below twenty twenty four meeting schedule.
Oh, that's a, yeah, special. Master plan meeting?
Yeah, sorry, but this, yeah, there's a typo there. It, it says. It says the twenty third.
Oh, I see.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's twenty.
But it's, yeah, it's the twenty seventh, okay.
Good catch, Chris.
I'm good for something.
Okay. So we need to vote to. Close the planning board, review accounts, and return funds to applicants?
So Chad, that, uh, it's really just a housekeeping thing, there's, um, I've gone. Every, every quarter I have to reconcile all these, all of our review counts, and these are some that old projects that were finalized. But the money is still sitting in review accounts, so we just need you to vote. Um. Vote those so that I can process them and. Return the funds and close the account, accounts.
Can we, do we have to vote on them separately, or can we do one? Vote? For all of them?
I think you can do one vote, but unless Rich says otherwise.
One vote is a fantastic idea.
Okay, great.
Great. Any, any discussion before we vote from anyone? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to. Uh. Close out the following review accounts and return the funds to the applicants for. Ninety five Holbrook Street, Wellfield. Five hundred and six dollars and two cents transfer. To the D P W account. Noon Hill Acres, Redwood Circle. Two thousand five hundred eighty one dollars and sixty three cents. Meeting House Road Solar Project Next Grid, five hundred and two dollars and forty seven cents. And Pondville Plaza, thirty five Pine Street. Two thousand thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote, Melissa?
Aye.
Eric?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Excellent, that. That looks like that. Concludes our new business items. Is there anything unanticipated that's not on the list?
Well, it's a good decision to separate master plan from your business in February, I guess, right?
Yes.
When, um, when were you planning on holding the public hearing for the zoning articles? March?
Uh, yes.
I guess, because we're doing, yeah, we're gonna have to do the master plan as a second meeting in.
Yeah, I just have to get the notice, yeah, I just have to get the notice of hearing to the newspaper. Uh, next week, and Rich is on vacation, so I gotta get that finalized this week.
Okay. So we already have the one public hearing. We have one in March and one in April, the. Uh, that we continued from.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Okay. And then we'll have to schedule some time to get with advisory to start the discussion with them on these.
Yeah, I can, um. We could reach out to David and see. What their schedule looks like, because. I mean, it's possible that. You might be able to do these hearings the, the beginning of April. You know, if. Like, I don't know what their cycle is, but.
Right, okay.
And also possibly you could do these via Zoom if you wanted to. You could do it fully remote, so if you wanted to do just a meeting on that.
Okay, well, so I think Betsy was looking at putting these on the March. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I don't see, well, you could put. We could put the inclusionary on. For the March. Actually. Yeah, you could actually put both of those on. For March. The use table, probably not.
Not the use table, we're not, right, right, so the, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Use table, we need to get direction guidance on.
So you're looking to do a second public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that means two legal advertisements.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Just trying to plan accordingly.
And then, Rich, do we also have? You have on here agenda, future agenda items, seven and nine Shire Drive. Shire Drive site plans, is that? Is that?
Yeah, those haven't come in yet, Chad, so. At the moment.
Those are pending, they're not a lot. Those are pending, they're not a lock for March.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and I don't. Nineteen is probably not gonna be March twelfth. At this point.
Yeah, and seven and nine, unless they get them in by the end of the week, they'll be scheduled in April.
Alright, which is two days from today.
Could happen.
Anything else?
So let me uh, throw this at you, um, just in terms of if um. If it turns out that March. Well, that might be too close to the master plan, never mind, you're probably not, I was gonna say you might be able to do the master plan. March meeting and March twelfth. Because you may have the time. If these other projects don't pan out.
Well, but if we're gonna do all those public hearings in March, maybe not.
Yeah, forget what I just said. Yeah, probably not gonna work, so.
Right.
Scratch it.
I think we just leave it, the schedule. With the master plans. Split. As a private, or is that separate?
That makes sense.
Alright.
Well, at least you could just turn your computer off in your home tonight.
I mean, we gotta vote that one first.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright. Yeah, good night, everyone, aye.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.